I'm Dean Banfield, Chair of the Finance Committee, and I want to welcome you to a Zoom public hearing. We're starting at 7:06 PM. And I declare that we have a quorum. Recommend that there are a few rules for using Zoom. We're going to have to take, if there are any motions on the table, we're going to have to take a vote by roll. In addition to that, it will proceed in the normal manner for anyone who is speaking to the committee. Please introduce yourself, give your address in the way that you would on a normal public hearing or other meeting, so that you can be properly identified for the record. So with no more further ado, I think we should jump right in and begin the meeting. We're going to start with a presentation on the light plant expenditures and payment in lieu of taxes, and that'll be from the Director of the Light Plant.
Good evening. I'm going to screen here.
Very good, thank you. Could you introduce yourself, Mr. Wood?
Yep. Hi, I'm Dave Wood. I'm the Director of the Light Plant, and I'm going to present Article 17, Light Plant Expenditures and Taxes. Before I go through this, I would like to point out that our budget, that the Light Board approved, was done in February, and it was before COVID-19. So a lot of our numbers are anticipated to change as the year progresses. And I just want to put that out there. We're going to have to reevaluate it. I'm going to go through what was voted on already. Here's our system demand, and you can see we're forecasting lower loads in 2020. 19 was down as well, and that's simply because of demand day, degree days. So we're following that forecast. So Light Plant total revenues forecasted for 2020 to be just over $29.3 million. The expenses are forecasted right around $28 million. And you can see these are the green blocks, and the yellow are the expenses. The net income, which we'll get to at the end of the presentation, is also shown here. Electric sales are broken up into a number of different categories. Residential sales are about 43% of the total sales. Commercial is about 51%, shown in blue. Municipal is about 6%, that's shown in yellow. And then lighting is less than 1%, so you really can't see that. It's really difficult to see what it is on there. Power cost categories. Here we have, and the green is the energy. Prices shown below, but energy is about 44% of the total power cost. Capacity costs are about 16%, that's shown in blue. The yellow is the transmission cost. That's about 20% total cost. And then you'll see we have fixed and other. That's about 11%. That represents fixed fees, tracks, administration fees from third parties, and ancillary services by ISO New England. So that's what's defined in there. You'll also see we have rec purchases in blue out on the right-hand side, and that's about 8% of the power costs. The generation types, we have a green here. It's grid mix. It's mostly gas, but it is a mix. Hydro, which is about 10% of the total. Landfill gas is 2%. Solar, represented in the darker green, is 9%. And the blue on the far right is wind, and that's about 10%. I did not mention that the grid mix is about 69% right now.
Is about 69%?
Yes.
69% what?
The total, of the total.
I'm sorry. Okay, thank you, Dave.
That's okay. Thanks for the question.
Quick question, if I may. Can you go back one slide?
Yep.
It seems like there's an incremental uptick on the solar. Are you still seeing uptick adoption there? Or is that just sort of static?
No, it's not static. We are installing solar still. We have residential customers that are installing, albeit it slowed down a little bit, given the state we're in right now. But we do have a number of customers that are interested in installing. You know, we're constantly looking for renewable contracts as we go. And so, you know, we have some projects that are coming online in the future that will be green. But that's not, I don't want to say it's slowed down some, but we still have interest, so that's a good thing.
One more question, Dave. Tom Tarpe, how has your unit price of energy varied over the last several years?
It's been pretty constant. We're actually in the middle of a cost of service study right now, rate design, that we've been working on with the Light Board and on a third party. So we'll have a lot more detail on that question in the relative future here. Okay, our operating costs. You can see purchased power is the largest chunk. That's $19.3 million. Blue, which is the operation maintenance, that's $6.9 million. The depreciation, which is in the yellow color, is $1.8 million. And then the debt service is about 1... I didn't write that number down, but it's not that big. Here's our capital outlay. We've laid, we put 20 and 21 in here. So for 2020, we had planned on $3.5 million for capital outlay. Depreciation fund was going to cover underground replacement projects like Barkis Farm and Wright Farm Road. Those are underground systems that need to be replaced. So we're going to fund those out of the depreciation. The underground fund, which if you've looked at your bill, you'll see there's a surcharge on there. We're using funds from the underground fund to convert Cambridge Turnpike. So it's part of that big project that Public Works has been working on. We did have a scheduled borrowing for 2020 that I'm not sure we're going to end up doing now. It'll probably get pushed out. You can see between 20 and 21, there's $3 million of borrowing. That's for our smart meter project, but that has significantly been pushed out with the current state we're in right now. So I'm not sure we'll get to that borrowing this year, but the plan is still to have that project happen. And then...
Is it smart metering? I just, I can't recall.
We haven't defined that yet. We haven't defined that yet. It's part of the conversation that we're having with the Light Board. But we do want to do it throughout the town for a number of different reasons. But we haven't defined if it's, you know, everyone, or can people opt out? But that conversation has been happening.
So this is Prashant Patel. Kind of curious, why defer, why push out the borrowing?
Well, simply because we, our plan was to bring on a consultant, to put an RFP together for us. And we're delayed right now, you know, two months on that. And once we get back to a new normal, when that might be, I don't know how far out it's going to be. So I don't know that we're going to be ready to actually spend the money in 2020. And that's why I'm saying it's likely to get pushed out again, which is extremely frustrating for me, because we've been talking about smart meters for, you know, three years, and we really need them as part of our strategic plan. So it's not...
Dave?
Yeah.
One other question. Dave, this is Dee Ortner. I have a question. In your report, on page six, you have, it's like the executive summary. And at the bottom of page six, it talks about the capital outlay, and it only has $1,699,000 in it. And I'm trying to figure out where that comes from and how that aligns with this slide.
I can't answer that tonight because I don't have my booklet at home with me. But I can, I can get an answer for that.
With, what should it be on this page? Or is that not, or don't you have enough information to answer that right now?
Yeah, I don't have it.
Hey, Dave, my apologies about that. When we get all the panelists lined up again, I'll explain what happened.
Yep, no problem.
Thanks.
Clearly didn't like your presentation, David.
Good.
There we go. Everything defaults to not on.
Dean, I'm loading up the panelists. Just give me a minute to explain what happened.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Carl, you're muted.
Well, the attendees seem to still be pretty robust. There's 20 of them.
Dave?
Yes.
This is Dee. And I didn't get the ending. You're going to get back on the capital outlay, page six of your report.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
It very well could be that we're looking at two different things.
Right.
That's how, where the number in that book is accurate, and the number we're showing represents something different, so.
Okay. How is your, based on the current...
I'm sorry, Dee, Dee, I'm sorry. We just need to take a minute to allow all the panelists. I just need to explain what happened. And I'm sorry, we can, we can get going here.
Okay.
Yep, just give me a minute. Thanks. Okay, Dean, I think we have quorum, and you've returned to your co-host and as Carrie too. So my apologies for that. We had a conflicting Zoom meeting that was not a webinar. It was a meeting, but it was trying to co-opt a separate town meeting that was trying to co-opt this hyper-length. Apologies, but we're back online and being recorded, and you can resume any time.
With a small interruption for technical difficulties, I think we can return to, these questions were being answered by Mr. Wood. And why don't you put your screen back up, and we'll see what we got there. Whoa.
Wait a second. Having a, having a license. There we go. Sorry about that.
So hey, Dave, this is Stephen Crane. Before you get going again, Dean, can I just make one comment about the technical difficulties?
Yeah, sure.
We, I've received a lot of feedback about the guideline, the guidance that we had put out about board and committee meetings. And that exact scenario was one of the reasons why we've been trying to be careful with our use of Zoom. And so we are going to, we are working on new guidance, so there more happen. But this, that type of thing has always been a risk with Zoom. And I am somewhat, Chris, Chris Comby, sorry, but I'm somewhat amused that that happened when I'm, at the same time, receiving feedback about how we need to have more Zoom meetings. So I just need, I just needed to get that off my chest. I'm sorry.
All right.
I'll try to limit my comic relief.
Okay. So we're back, we're back where we were.
So with regard to Dee's question, we'll look into that and see why there's a discrepancy there. But we'll, we'll get more information back about that particular question.
Thank you. And in that, you'll also include what you are not going to be funding now that, that is included on this screen.
Yeah, I mean, we have to go through all that. We have to get our timing together. That's going to take a little bit of time to get all sorted out. But yes, the plan is to go through that and come up with a plan. And, you know, the budget itself may have to be revised and amended, or we may just put it the way it is and show bigger variances at the end of the year and explain why.
Do you think that your CMLP, the pilot payment, will vary also?
I'm going to get to that in a minute, but the answer is...
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Hi, this is Chris Reynolds. Can I just ask a quick question? I'm sorry, on that same slide. So the money that you spent in 2020, the half a million, was that for the smart meters? Or is it the $2.5 million in 2021?
It's both.
It's both. Okay, got it. I'm sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome. So this slide shows the total revenue, which I mentioned earlier, of $29.3 million. It shows the total expenses of $28.8 million. And showing for year 2020, net income of $470,492, 1.6% return. So again, that number was, we talked about earlier, and we have been seeing higher residential sales because people are at home, and obviously lower commercial sales because businesses are shut down right now. So those numbers are going to be as well. And we're doing some analysis on that, and we'll continue to.
Thank you.
The payment in lieu of taxes is set to be $474,500. This is based on a formula that is derived by the Finance Director and myself, and ultimately approved by the Town Manager. The formula is, is used on the basis of previous audited financial kilowatt hour sales multiplied by 2.75 mils per kilowatt hour, or $2,750 per million kilowatt hour sold. And that's how we come up with what the payment in lieu of taxes are.
So does that, just a quick question on that. Does that always sort of, a malleable number right to the June 30th point, based on, you know, based on kilowatt hours delivered kind of metrics? In other words, that number is not something you could, because it's not, it doesn't agree, again, with the budget book. The budget book shows 470, 180, but this is 474. Is it just because of a run rate situation?
I'll have to double check. It's, it's, it should be set based on the previous audited kilowatt hour sales multiplied by that 2.75. It should be the same.
It's not, we have 470, 180, and this is 474, 500. It's not, not a big difference, but it's not the same.
Well, the article, Article 17 does show 474, 500. So it, there is a discrepancy between the, you know, between your book and what the article does say.
And you're referring to the...
Article 17?
No, no. You're... Yeah, no, I understand that. But you're referring to the Enterprise book?
Yeah, the Enterprise book on page six is, that's the same situation.
It's on page six.
Okay. This, this...
Wait, can we go back? I'm sorry. I mean, can I ask a question, follow up on the pilot?
Yep.
So again, that's calculated on, on what? On your revenues? It's a formula based on revenues?
It's a, it's a formula based on kilowatt hour sales.
Okay.
From audit. That total number is then multiplied by 2.75 mils per kilowatt hour. And that works out to be 2,750 per million kilowatt hour sold. It's a, it's a pretty common for MLPs to calculate it this way.
Okay. So that hasn't really changed much over the last four years then, I guess?
It goes up and down a little bit as sales...
A little bit. Okay, so kilowatt hour sales hasn't varied that much in the last four years. Is that accurate?
No, it has, it has varied up and down. But it's not, it's not so significant that the number changed radically. So it's pretty stable, which is good for the general fund.
Yep. Good. Okay, so it's pretty, okay. So the calculation is, this hasn't changed?
No, not the way we calculated it.
Thank you.
So the growth, this is Prashant Patel. Another question. So how, if you go back to the previous slide, the gross margin, does that, the net income, is that, so the total expenses include the pilot payment?
Yep, in there.
And so what happens to the 470 that's left, 492?
That gets applied to our, our fund policy that the Light Board adopted. It's on the website, if you, if you look at it. But that would get put back into the system in one, another.
Okay, thank you.
The one thing that's worth noting, and it's never happened, but if we didn't have a return at the end of the year, by law, we're not supposed to pay a pilot. So we've been fortunate to never have that problem. I just pointed out, because I should.
Wait, so you mean that if you didn't show a net income, you would not, you would be precluded from paying a pilot? Or you...
Yeah, by law, we, we wouldn't be able to pay a pilot.
Ah, okay. Is there any danger of that happening?
No, we've never had that problem. But I just want to mention it, so.
You're scaring us, okay.
Yeah.
Well, but 2019 is pretty close, $68,000.
Yeah, that was close. But, you know, again, the, the forecasted, what we forecasted versus what the actual sales were were significantly different because of the degree days. So yeah, that was close. But that's specifically why we do a cost of service study every three to five years. And we're in, I believe, year four. So it makes sense to do that, so that we don't run into that issue. You know?
It's all or nothing, so either...
Why not, everybody? Can I, I need everybody to just hold on a minute. I'd like Mr. Wood to be able to provide his presentation. This is more like the context of town. They go through the presentation, and then we have an opportunity to ask questions. So please hold your questions and let him get through the presentation. I'm as much of a, you know, violator of that question myself. But let, let's let him finish his presentation, because, you know, at town meeting, he's going to have five, six minutes. He's not going to have, you know, an open-ended conversation with the town. So let's, let's let him do his presentation.
Fair enough. Okay, so here's the strategic plan. You can find it on our website. It has all the initiatives. I showed this to the Finance Committee last year as well. The dark diamonds are things that we have committed to or have completed. The diamonds that have white stripes or black stripes in them are things that we're, we're planning or have a target date for. And again, the example I use here is the smart meters. You can look, 2020, we're already missed some of these target dates. Those will push out. And that's what I was referring to earlier. But for the most part, we're making some pretty good progress on this. And we're trying to keep this strategic plan updated on the website. As things happen, we, we update it. And so I just wanted to kind of show that. And if you wanted to spend a little time on it, you could on our website. Telecommunications, also part of the Light Plant. We, internet offerings since 2000, we've been doing it since 2014. You can see the speed ranges that we have, 35 gigabits per second to 400 available. We're capable of one gigabit per second service to customers. We currently have, as of January, 1,500 customers. So it's been growing as we anticipated. Rates are favorable as well. And I just listed the website there, if you're interested in looking at that. 2019 results grew by 26% from 2018 numbers. Again, very close to what we targeted. The 2019 revenues were $1.1 million, and the net income was $360,910. We added a network engineer. And recently, because of all the internet usage by the customers, everyone being home, we did increase our bandwidth. So we're running about 50% right now, so we have plenty of bandwidth. And it's pretty, it's been pretty steady for the last two months. So we're in good shape there. Here's our revenue by sources. Again, you can see residential is our highest revenue source. We do have commercial in there as well. Some municipal, albeit not a lot. And then other revenue is in there as well. And the 2020 plans, we're looking at trying to increase by about 20%. That would make our revenue almost $1.3 million and a net income of $277,954. We did hire a telecommunications director just a couple of months ago. So that was, that was a milestone. And we now have four telecommunications technicians. One of the things that we're expanding, we're actually in the process right now of adding an additional bucket truck to support the telecommunications technicians. And we're also working to increase vendor diversity to support 10G service upgrades. And we're partially through that now, but there's still a little bit of work to do there. And here is, it's a similar slide that we have on the electric side. But this shows the revenue and expenses that I was referring to, as well as the, the net income. So I'll take any questions that you might have at this point.
Dee has a question. Bandwidth increase. What did, you said you now have an additional 50% capacity. What does it cost to increase that? I mean, what's, what did you have to pay to increase that?
I'd have to look back at the exact numbers, but it wasn't, it wasn't significantly expensive. So, you know, that expense, we hadn't budgeted in this, in this budget for, because we, you know, didn't anticipate the traffic. But it was, I don't want to give you the wrong number, but I think a couple thousand dollars.
Okay, so it's not significant, but it made a vast improvement to all of your people who are on the system.
Yeah, I mean, we, we weren't at the, we weren't at the top end yet. This peak put us close to it. We had wiggle room, but not enough if one of our vendors dropped out, you know, outage. So now we're, we're covered in that regard.
Okay. And my other question is, what is 10G service? I mean, I think I'm on 4G on my phone. What's 10G?
It's 10 gigabits. It's, it's very technical. It's hard to explain to people that aren't in the industry. But it's, it's, it's a service offering, and we're working through that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's enough.
Eric.
Maybe, okay. Hi, Dave. You started your presentation by saying that this was done, this budget was done in February. And since then, I'm assuming that you're seeing a drop in consumption of electricity. And I also noticed that most of your costs are variable, so I'm assuming you can react to decreases in consumption by decreasing some of your operating expenses. I guess my real question is, do you see any possibility of having a negative bottom line this year? Or what are your, what is your thinking right now?
It's a little early for us to say that at this point. It's a great question. I would say that we're we're positioned pretty well financially. We set up an emergency fund back in 2006, there's a million dollars in there, and, you know, it could be used for something like this. So, you know, the residential sales are up, commercial are down. So we have to do analysis on that to figure out, you know, what that means to the overall sales. And and it's too early for us to do that at this point because we're we're not at a new normal.
Follow up, quick follow up. So is the pilot in jeopardy?
I don't.
If you had to dip into that million dollar, you know, is?
Yeah, I don't. I don't think the pilot's going to be in jeopardy.
Thank you. Thank you.
Prashar, I see your hand, Chris. You'll be next after Prashar.
Just a quick follow up. So is the pilot payment an all or nothing? So if you happen to be $1 in the red, the town doesn't get the entire 450 for 25, whatever the formula would have been? And if it's $1 over, you get the entire amount?
Yeah, as long as we're on the good side of the line, it's it's the whole thing. You know, if we're on the other side of the line, that's where, you know, you're not, you know, by law, you're not, you're not supposed to pay the pilot. We could obviously make a decision if we wanted to continue to pay that because we have, you know, emergency funds and things of that nature. So again, that's why I'm not worried about that. I did want to point it out so that it was transparent.
Yep, thank you.
So, Chris, go ahead. You're muted.
There I am. Okay. I have questions on the balance sheet, in particular, your unrestricted fund balances. So your finance manager was kind enough to send me a draft fund policy, and I looked on your website. I don't see where there is a fund policy other than the draft that I was presented with, so I just couldn't find it. But in any event, in the draft, which is that I saw that has yet to be adopted, the there's a discussion that they would, that the light fund would keep an unrestricted fund balance between 15 and 25% of total operating expenses. And I sort of look at that and I compare it to what we do with free cash at the town, which runs somewhere between, I think, 5 and 10%, and that which the schools are allowed to retain, which I think is 3 to 4%. And it's, it seems quite large to me. And when I look at the balance in the light fund, it's 7.2630, 2019. I'm not sure what that balance will look like at 2020. But that's just about at 25%. If your expenses are around 28 million, seven on 28, you know, it's about 25% of your your operating budget in reserves. That seems large to me. Could you? Could you speak to that?
Sure. The that policy was adopted by the light board. I'll have to check why it's not on the website. It should be. We'll get it there.
It's not. When was it adopted? Because the minutes for the last meeting are not up, but the prior two were there, and I didn't see it adopted there.
Yeah, I'll have to double check, but it was voted on. So in terms of the the number itself and the 25% that you referred to, you know, it's it sounds like a lot of money, but when you think about the the plant value that we have, that's over $60 million. It's really not a lot of money. You know, we have some very high end equipment that if we had a failure, you know, would would take a lot of money to fund. We also factored in the equation that power supply is about $2 million a month. You know, it's like 1.8, and, you know, we we try to have two to three months worth of power supply in the in the in the bank, so to speak, because we transfer that money in advanced so we can pay our bills on time through Energy New England. And that was some of the thinking behind why the number is what it is. But I think it would be helpful for you guys if we get that that voted policy up on the website so you can see it. It makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I think I think it would be helpful. Going back to the depreciation, so you actually fund depreciation, am I correct?
Correct.
So there's another $4 million of funded depreciation beyond what I just spoke to on the 7.2.
Yeah, so depreciation is funded every year. It's a it's a regulation that we follow by the state. It's supposed to be set at 3%. You can file with the state to have that changed.
3% of revenue?
Yeah. So.
And that doesn't make much sense, does it? So where does that come from?
That that comes right out of the bills. It's funded right out of the the bills.
No, I mean, the 3% of revenue. Why? That's not the way typically depreciation is calculated. Why? Is that standard in that industry?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I think the reserve policy will be interesting, and for the other presenters, I'm going to be asking that same question when we get to water and sewer as well. Thank you.
Yeah, and one thing that I didn't mention that I wanted to in the beginning, I it slipped my mind, is, you know, we're in a unique period of time right now, as everyone knows. You know, we're not charging late fees. You know, some people are struggling to pay their bills. We're not disconnecting them like we normally would. So, you know, it's very, very different times for us. I mean, we've we've changed a lot of things in the interim to to try and get through this period of time. So, you know, we won't, we won't be collecting late fees and won't be shutting people.
But you have plenty of reserves to deal with it.
We have reserves to deal with it, yes.
Yes, we do.
I just have a quick clarifying question, if I can ask. You mentioned you're hiring telecom employees. When you say telecom, are you talking about the 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 internet, or are you talking about something else?
Yeah, talking about broadband.
Okay.
We hired a telecommunications director. He's been on for a couple of months now, and we now, we went from three technicians to four technicians. And that's simply because of demand, and we'll be able to do most of the installs without having private contractors in to help us. So it's.
I have a question. I'd like to return to the the size of the reserve fund. One of the features that you keep such high reserves for is to, you know, in the event of an emergency, you have large scale equipment that may fail, and you may need to be able to dip into that and to to quickly replace things and keep things going. Does the town, does the light plant carry any form of insurance on this $60 million, you know, investment that we have in plant and equipment? Such that if a large component were to fail, we would have some some level of, you know, of financial reserves beyond just literally keeping a savings account?
Yeah, we do. We do have insurance, and we have supplemental insurance. It's, you know, as you go through a process like that, you know, and we're in an emergency, we have to be able to get what we need right then and there, and, you know, the insurance can take some time to process. So, you know, it definitely would be a good gap for us.
It seems like a lot of money to keep for something which for which you would have some level of coverage that, you know, person's house burns down, I assume that their insurance company is going to run in with adjusters and start getting the thing rebuilt as quickly as possible. I know that you're saying we have to move quickly. It's electricity. People need it all the time. But to keep that much reserve and and call it sort of an insurance policy as a savings account seems, it seems like a lot of, you know, the town has up to $10 million for the entire town budget, so it seems a, it seems like a lot.
Yeah, so, you know, I've heard that before. I will say we had a third party consultant go through this. This is very standard, you know, in the industry. We're actually, there's others that have much more than we do, but, you know, when we built the building, we're now we built it out of cash. We didn't do a borrowing for it. So it gets used for for meaningful things.
Yeah, but but it's not invested in long term because the government doesn't allow you, the rules don't allow you to do that. I assume the government doesn't assume you have this money for years and years, right? So there's, it's a strange proposition, right, for you to keep, you know, 7 million hanging around. And Dean, really, the number is more interesting at the total town level because it's 20 million. There's about 2, 2, 2.7 million in in BD that isn't technically unrestricted, it's depreciation. But there's 20 million in all these enterprise funds that's kind of hanging around. It's, you know, and it's all invested short term.
Yep.
Doesn't make sense to me.
Dean?
Yes.
Stephen Crane, can I just, can I respond to that?
Please.
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, Christine, I would, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think it's it's safe to say that it's hanging around. It does sound like a lot of money to be parked, and I don't think it's fair to aggregate them because they really are, you know, siloed. So enterprise fund reserves are for enterprise funds, general fund reserves for general fund, and you can't really mix them, mix them and match them. So aggregating the reserves really kind of doesn't paint an accurate picture of each function having it. And the primary function of reserves is better bond rating and lower interest rates. So it's not hanging around. It's saving the taxpayers debt service money.
Yeah, well, but it's, we do that for the town at 5 to 10%, right? So in the, in the, in the, in water, they have 7.4 million in unrestricted, and they're, you know, 10% of their expenditures would be about 600 grand. So it just, you know, it seems like it's accumulated over time, Stephen, so it it can't be being drawn down, given the sizes of it.
No, I I think that's fair. I, like I said, I think the the light plant's a little bit different because we're running a business, and we want healthy reserves, and and because we are, we are not backed up by the full faith and credit of the, you know, the taxpayers of the town of Concord, it's it's rate based, as you know. So they did, like I said, I give the, I give the light plant board a lot of credit. They really, they dove into this reserves policy and spent quite a bit of time doing it, and I know I know they did approve it. So they have, you know, it's their purview, and they have taken a hard look, and I think they were satisfied where things stand. And they, and Dave's right, they did get some outside guidance on what the right, on what a right range should be.
Okay, well, I'm interested in seeing how it came out. You know, one of the things that was in the draft anyway is something called a severe revenue loss reserve, which, you know, again, not unlike Dean's comment, you know, that that's, that's kind of a strange concept from reserving perspective, right? You know, and again, in the corporate world, you don't get to put up everything you want in contingency, right? There has to be something that's really going to happen. You have to actually say that there's a loss has been incurred, or there's a contingency that's real. So some of the stuff that, you know, that's reserved for looks like a bit of a stretch to me. But again, I'm not, I I'm not in the utility industry. I don't, I don't know about it, so I'd be interested to read the final policy and understand more about it.
Yeah, so, you know, I'll get that up on the website. I will say that, you know, the draft is not like the the final piece. Like that you just talked about is not in the poll. So, you know, we went, we went to the light board a few times on this, and they had some questions like that. And, you know, we worked it out. So, you know, there's a number of things that we removed and reduced. So I'll, I'll see if we can't get that up on the website tomorrow. I thought it was already there. I apologize for that.
It maybe. I I couldn't find it. I went in there and I looked around for it, but maybe it's somewhere and not clearly, but what section would it be in?
I don't know.
Okay, I couldn't find it.
But but nonetheless, if you can't find it, then it's in the, it's not in a good spot. It should be easy, easy to find. And my guess is it it may not have been put up yet, so.
Okay, thank you.
So one further comment on on these unrestricted reserves that are available. Do they give you some level of flexibility to work with entities to get into business relationships that could generate a revenue stream for the light plant? Now, I'm thinking of a couple of places in the community where panels could legitimately be put up, but do take a capital startup fee that will cost money. Could these reserves be used to, say, put a canopy on the high school parking lot? Or to put panels on the new middle school that's proposed? And then you have a revenue stream because you're generating a business, you know, revenue stream? Is that that the kind of thing these reserves could be tapped for?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, one of the things that we talked about was the the smart meter borrowing. You know, do we borrow the money or do we fund it out of reserves, you know? And the example you gave about solar, we absolutely could do that. We'd want to look at the payback. Does it make sense? You know, or is that solar rate costing us, you know, 25 cents a kilowatt hour when we could buy it from a third party for 7 cents, let's say? We have to look at all those economics too, but the answer is yes.
Okay, so so it, in its unrestricted form, even though you have these ideas that it's an emergency fund for a large failure, or these are other things that it's there for, it could be used in an unrestricted way for business opportunities, let's call them.
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. I think, are there any more questions from the committee? Because I do, I know I have at least one hand up from the community. So any more committee member questions? Okay, I have, I have a, I hand up and.
Dean, I'm sorry, if you don't mind just reminding attendees how to sit Q and A or ask a question.
Okay, so in this mode, in the Zoom, in the Zoom application, if you hover your mouse over the lower part of your screen, you should see a little feature there with a hand that says raise hand. And if you raise your hand, and I can, I will recognize you, and then I will unmute your mic, and you're welcome to speak. So that's the procedural way in which we can engage with the normal process of stepping up to the microphone in a hearing. So I've, I've already recognized one member here, and 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 I've got that mic open. So, Carlin, if you introduce yourself and give your address, we can speak to your question.
Sure, this is Carlin Reed. I live at 84, 83 Wits End in Concord. I'm also a member of the PEG Access Advisory Committee, but I'm speaking in my personal behalf. I had a question about the payment in lieu of franchise, which is located and described on page 46 of the Light Plant's Enterprise Budget Book. Dave, I've spoken with you about this just very briefly, and it represents, as I understand, thank you, six, it represents roughly a transfer of about $19,000 from the light plant to the PEG Access Fund as as part of, as a compensation, I think for broadband of some sorts. The question I have is, you talked about the the light board revising the budget in the future. Is this particular fee, this amount, it's about 19,000 bucks, likely to be changed as far as a transfer to the to the PEG Access Fund?
It's not likely to change for this budget. That's, that's what it is. That's a, an item that isn't in our numbers currently, but it would be added to it.
If if I may, it's Stephen Crane. This is something that we proposed this year as as a new item, really in response to, you know, actually response to feedback we received from the PEG, from the PEG Public Access Advisory Committee about, you know, if we're, if we're competing directly with Comcast subscribers for broadband, and the PEG funding relies on franchise fees from Comcast, is that something that we should take into consideration? You know, a future off, so so it can continue to do its work and be, and have a stable level of funding. So this is one of those things that we kind of, I don't say kind of threw in there, but we came up with a, we came up with a concept, came up with a methodology that made sense for this year, and and we're going to try, we're going to try it out essentially.
Can I just say, this is Kate Hodges. It's covered in the PEG budget, which is later.
Right.
In in much more detail, including how we got there.
Okay, yeah, good. But for, in terms of the light plant, in terms of remaining light plant, that that is our intent. But again, that was, like everything that's going to be presented, that was before. But again, that was, like everything that's going to be presented, that was before pandemic and that we don't know what the net outcome of is yet.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. That's it.
Okay, I'm going to take that down. Are there any more questions from the public? I don't see any further hands raised, so I think we can move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the solid waste disposal. And I think Mr. Cathcart is going to speak to that. Helen, are you there?
I am muted and, okay, here I am. What I'd like to do is basically introduce one of the new team players. I think everybody understands Public Works has been through a significant transition over the past six months. And we've had a vacancy in this position for the solid waste recycling. However, Melissa Simon Ceni, who is a member of our staff, has sort of taken the lead over the last few months. She's worked closely with Anna Trout, Paul Reinhardt, and Bob Hill on sort of managing the program, has a pretty good handle of it. And I thought it would be helpful if she were to present to the group. Melissa has the presentation prepared. And I thought you'd hear from me on the water and wastewater side, so it might be good for the group to hear directly from someone who's been sort of more intimately involved, if that's okay.
Thank you. Melissa, take it away.
All right, thank you very much. Let me get the presentation up and going. All right, that should do it. Just wanted to take a quick moment to thank the board and other CPW staff for being here. I'm hopefully going to give you a nice brief overview of Article 17, the Solid Waste Disposal Fund expenditures. Nothing has really changed in the program since last year, so it should be all pretty routine. The program consists of two major components, the curbside collection and disposal, which includes solid waste and recycling, along with our drop off days that we host twice a year, and the operation and maintenance of the landfill and compost site. Here's just a quick overview of our curbside program. As many of you know, the curbside program is almost entirely rate funded with some smaller initiatives with smaller state grants. While the trash and recycling is not technically an enterprise fund, it runs much in the same fashion and doesn't receive funding from the real estate bills. Concord offers a pay as you throw program, which encourages recycling and encourages and discourages trash generation. Our program's actually been a model for a number of other communities because we still have dual steam recycling at this point, which has been proven to be rather environmentally sound and allows us to have a better market for our, our recycling goods. The curbside program also includes household hazardous waste collection, which I'll get into a little in a moment, is rather economical. We have billing just twice a year with easy online payment and now been able to offer the online purchase of barrel stickers and disposal tags. And just a couple of metrics on how we're doing. This is our tonnage, also known as the weight of waste that we put into the waste stream. You'll see that municipal solid waste, the green line, which is pretty much your trash, that line has been pretty static over the number of years, even though our rate or our subscription rates increased. So we have more subscribers, but we've kept our tonnage relatively stable. So that's great. And you also see that recyclables over the last number of years has slowly been decreasing. This is a trend that you're seeing with almost all communities. It's really due to the fact that plastics that people are throwing away are a lot more lightweight. They're not as thick as they used to be. And people are transitioning away from typical paper media like newspapers and magazines to having stuff more available electronically. Let's see, I think that does it for that one. And here's some of the real meat, our cost to the subscribers. Our curbside program consists of two different types of fees. A collection fee, which covers the cost to collect the material and pick it up from your house, and then the disposal fee. Over the last number of years of the program, the disposal fee has remained the same. We haven't had to have an increase. But over the last number of years with, or the last two years with the recycling market and the fact that there's really no market for our paper, where we used to actually get money for all of our paper, now we have to pay money to take it away, we had to increase the disposal fee for the first time in a number of years. So that is about an average yearly increase of about just over $30 per subscriber. And we also want to make sure that our program is, operates a good value. And when we pull the other haulers that worked in town for similar services, we actually came in about $50 to $100 less than other competitors. For some reasons that people still choose to go with a competitor, something could be as simple as they want their trash picked up on a specific day of the week and the town can't offer that type of customized service. Or they want the hauler to be able to drive down their long driveway to pick their trash right up at their, at their garage, wherever they're storing it. And that's something that our program can't offer. Let's see, I think that's what I had there. And this is where things can start to get fun or interesting. I'm not sure which one you call it, depending on who you are. But the town's contract with waste management is, runs through the end of FY '21. So we've been working on starting to pull other communities, seeing what the industry is doing to properly position us to begin contract negotiations soon. You know, based on what we've seen from other communities out West, the current recycling markets and regional landfill closures, we can expect to see some rate increases next year. But we really have a good opportunity to bring the program up to speed. And we're lucky, town manager Crane had gone through this with his previous community because their contracts were being renewed last year. So I think we have some good opportunities that I'm really looking forward to seeing what we can make happen for the town. And just a brief overview of kind of some of our main functions that have been affected by the virus. One of our big events that we hold twice a year, we had to cancel our spring drop off swap off, which was supposed to be just this last weekend. But we are planning on having a fall event in October. Batteries, bulbs, and mercury, typically people were able to drop those off right at CPW, but because we're not staffed and can't properly store them right now, we're asking people just to hang tight. And as soon as we open, we'll be able to figure out how we can safely offer disposal, year round disposal of those items with us. Household hazardous waste, which all of our curbside customers can attend one event a year at the Minuteman Facility in Lexington. The last two events in April and May have been canceled, but we still have six other events going on throughout the year at the Lexington facility. And then we also have our one event here in Concord that we host every other year, which will be in September this year. And we've also, we're excited that we were able to open up the compost site on a kind of limited basis. We extended our hours to make it, allow more time for people to come. And right now it's open on Fridays and Saturdays from 8:00 AM to 3:00. Unfortunately, we don't have the paint shed open at this time because it requires too much close contact and we're not handing out the new stickers yet for this year because that would require us to have to, a lot of interaction with the attendees. Once social distancing restrictions are lifted, we'll figure out when we revert back to our normal schedule of Saturdays and Wednesdays, we'll open up the paint shed and we'll get those residential stickers out to customers. This is just a quick photo of, you know, some of the social distancing that people have been doing. Everybody's been very respectful. We've been thankful for that, which has allowed us to continue to operate the site. Also, kind of with all the recent wind, it's been nice because not only does the highway and grounds help us operate the compost site, they also use it for storage of, you know, all those branches that they're picking up all over town for, and they bring them there to be chipped. And with that said, I think I've lost my page here. But I'd be happy to take any questions that the board has. And this has been a relatively routine item over the last number of years. So thank you for your time.
So Melissa, you could unshare your screen, then people can see the full grid of, of participants. Thank you. I, I have one question. In our house, we would love to be seeing a, a curbside pickup of compostable materials. There is, there is a business in town that's operating, Black Earth. Neighbor of mine subscribes to the service. I may well subscribe. Would it be possible for the town to partner with a company like that and offer their service as an add on to, to the waste, to the waste pickup? Because I think it would be popular. I think if it were part of or somehow added to the service matrix, people would be all over it. And, you know, there would be a lot less in the municipal waste stream because a lot of it, a lot of what goes into that is compostable material.
I agree, and that's definitely something that we're looking into. I think it's something almost about a quarter of people's waste is food waste. And there are a lot of other towns who are doing similar things and we're all, we're all pooling our ideas, but we're on board and it'll help us meet Concord and the state of Massachusetts, meet the waste reduction goals.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else from the committee have any questions about this item? Okay, well, thank you, Melissa. And I think we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the sewer system, and we'll go back to Mr. Cathcart.
Hello, thank you very much.
I don't see any, I don't see any attendees raising their hands with questions. So I just need to make a note that I don't see anybody stepping to the virtual microphone, so to speak. So we can move on.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Again, Alan Cathcart, I am now the Director of Public Works. You know me, the past 23 years as the Water Sewer Superintendent. With that said, I'm going to request, and I've done this in the past at this hearing, if I can present the water fund first, and that 95% of the community is affected directly from that. And it sort of sets the table on the wastewater to help, hopefully it makes the...
I have no objection to that request. So anybody else object to the slight reordering of the agenda? Carry on.
Excuse me. Wrong, wrong slide. Hold on. I have them both open. I'm sorry. Okay. Can you see, I'm going to...
If you have two windows open, you have to select the window that...
Are you able to see it now?
No, we're seeing sewer.
Okay, I will. Let me go back to share, select water, share.
There we go.
Okay. Okay, so this article, in essence, authorizes the funding of the town water system for the next year through the use of user fees and other department income.
Alan, I'm sorry, if you could just switch your presenter view.
You switch out of that view. We're seeing your...
Oh, you're seeing, okay.
Yeah, we're seeing the whole thing.
Let me stop share. One second, I apologize. I practiced this earlier and it seemed to work fine. I apologize. Water view.
Nice backdrop.
Yeah, slideshow, presenter view. It should be. Now go back. Share screen. And do you see the presenter view again? Or can you see the, what do you see now?
Alan, when you just did that last click is when it went to the dual screen thing again. So the last step that you did, you need to undo.
Okay.
Yeah, that looks better.
Although unfortunately it has my notes on the other. Can you try that and see if you can get me to where? Just hoping, is that still...
It's showing your notes.
It's okay.
Mr. Cathcart, if we look at your notes, we're not going to hold it against you.
Okay, thank you. So basically...
Very interesting notes, actually.
So in essence, you know, the real issue that I'm kind of fascinated with in the spring of 2000, when the, I was going through the change into, you know, the past 100 years, some of the top events that were reviewed through, you know, the planning departments of the world, was in essence, number one important component was the provision of pure water and effective sewage treatment. I think it's very important because it really highlighted the fact that a lot of communities sort of evolved and developed around of having, you know, effective and quality drinking water, but also on the wastewater treatment. It's kind of fascinating that one of the significant events of clean water and actually wastewater treatment was the fact that it, the, you're kind of familiar with typhoid, dysentery. These were serious problems, you know, over 100 years ago. And it's kind of fascinating, we're revisiting this phenomenon. But one thing I'd like to sort of, you know, make comment on is that the essential services that water sewer provide through whatever, you know, pandemic, it has to be reliable, it has to be consistent. And I think everybody in Concord would appreciate and recognize that, you know, through this, the past few months, we really haven't had to worry about, you know, fortunately, this essential service. So it really highlights really why I got into the industry and kind of appreciate the fact that the importance of investment and reliable and, and, you know, consistent service. When we look at the program objectives on the water side, we look at the regulatory statutory requirements, we look at customer satisfaction, we look at sufficient supply today and in the future. And a lot of what our budget forecasting is designed to do, as well as the rate setting, is understand not just where we are today, but where are we going to be in 10 years? When we talk about the regulatory statutory requirements, they drive a lot of our costs. We have the surface water treatment rule, which is a major component of where we're going in our capital plan. You have lead and copper rules, which deal with the corrosivity of water and the fact we have old infrastructure and pipes in the system that we're trying to work on removing. You have disinfection byproducts. We have the Water Management Act, and that's a very important regulatory framework of how we, and what we're enabled to withdraw as far as within Concord, as well as at NAGO. And that, that sets a lot of requirements and additions on how we operate. We also have the obligation to maintain and operate your system. And in essence, that's basically, we spend a lot of our, our time and resource... um, doing that, uh, and we do consider it Concord's system. We're here as the stewards. We try to maintain reasonable competitive rates, and we'll sort of walk through a little bit on that. As far as hiring, retaining and training professional workforce, the workforce today is very different than it was 20 years ago. And it probably won't look exactly like this in the next 10 years because of all the various drivers we tried to do to sort of enhance and improve, you know, our, our services. With that said, the infrastructure, uh, the assets, uh, at $24 million. Um, it's a fairly complex system. I mentioned this in the past. We don't have just one treatment facility or one source of supply. We, we have a mix of groundwater supplies, where you can see we have six different sources in different parts of the town. We have NAGOG water up in, uh, on the border of Acton and Littleton. We have a number of pumping stations. We have water treatment, you know, presently over the Deaconess facility. Uh, it's what we anticipate, you know, putting in place up at NAGOG. We have two large storage reservoirs. Um, one of them is in, uh, you know, significant need of, uh, refurbishment. We have over 134 miles of, uh, distribution main. That's the X pipes that range in the, you know, from a diameter of eight inch to 16 inch. Um, and they feed, uh, not just drinking water, but fire protection for the community. Uh, where you see we have over 1,300, um, hydrants that, uh, we maintain and keep operable in the event of, uh, emergencies. As far as our capital, uh, plan, uh, you can see it's fairly robust. I think the narrative here, and most importantly is we have a lot of investment, uh, that we have, um, anticipated in putting towards, uh, NAGOG Pond. Again, it's a unfiltered surface water system that has been in the, uh, planning stages, uh, for treatment for over two decades. Uh, we decided to move forward with it, this, uh, we had, uh, had a sufficient, what we thought at the time, reserve. And we got approval for some borrowing at a town meeting a few years ago, uh, to fund this, you know, this is the most significant investment we have to make in our system in the next, uh, 10 to 20 years. And this, uh, coming year, we were looking to realize the, uh, construction. Uh, we phased this part of, uh, intake, a replacement of a 1909 age, cast pipe that goes out over 1,800 feet into NAGOG Pond. That is planned to be replaced. Uh, we're hoping to have it, uh, begin in the fall. We have, uh, the treatment facility itself is, we're completing design uh, of the full-scale facility and looking for, uh, some monies to start the construction. Uh, dependent upon permitting and, uh, you know, working with the state and the, uh, town of Acton on that. Uh, we have some funds available for emerging contaminants. Um, there are sort of contaminants of interest that we are aware of in the industry. They're called, you know, PFOS or, uh, polyfluorinated, um, alcohol compounds. Um, the entry is presently, uh, there's a regulatory, uh, review of, um, some standards. The state may be looking at imposing over the next year. We're trying to make sure we have monies and funds available if, uh, necessary. And we also have, um, routine investment on an annual basis into the water main replacement. And you can see, uh, the, uh, value we have for, uh, 21 actually complements the money that we anticipate spending um, this fiscal year. However, with the COVID, uh, situation, there has been a bit of a delay on uh, when that may start up, uh, but we do anticipate doing work, uh, in the Peter Spring Road area, um, this coming construction season. Uh, we also will go back, have some funds available, uh, for the meter, uh, reading upgrade. Depending upon, we want to complement any work that the municipal light plant may do, um, so that we have funds to, uh, partner and be efficient, uh, with that particular program. As far as our operating maintenance plan, uh, you can see it's just about, uh, $5 million, uh, in total. Uh, most of those, uh, costs are for the pumping, treatment, distribution, um, uh, maintenance. Uh, we do, uh, put a significant level of depreciation into our facilities, and the question became up, you know, uh, earlier with the light plant as far as, you know, what's the basis of that depreciation? Uh, we do have, uh, depreciation schedules for our various assets, whether it's, uh, pumping equipment or pipe mater, uh, pipes themselves, uh, but we work with the finance department on sort of establishing what the appropriate um, value should be. And, uh, while we don't do a pilot, we do, uh, contribute to the general fund uh, on an annual basis because we get a lot of support from other, uh, departments and services within the town. And whereas we are, uh, designed to operate like a business and, um, you know, make sure we cover the, the full costs, you know, without the support of the taxes. Um, we do have a significant contribution, uh, that goes towards, uh, other, um, departments. Uh, here's a breakdown, uh, where you can see, uh, sort of where our, uh, O and M expenditures, um, go. It rolls into, uh, our, our rates. Um, in fact, I would sort of, you know, mention, and we'll probably get into it with some questions, um, discussion, uh, but if you have the budget book in front of you, I would urge you, um, look at page, uh, 64. Um, and, you know, really that's sort of the master plan of our, uh, revenues, expenditures and, uh, uh, rates, uh, all sort of get folded into this. And it's a 10-year pro forma. I'm proud to say one of the few water systems I know that have one, uh, like this. It was a tool that was developed over 20 years ago. And it really has helped, uh, chart our course as far as knowing, uh, where our significant expenditures is going to occur, what the appropriate rates, uh, structure should be to realize, you know, not just next year or five years, but really 10 years out. And it sort of captures all of those, um, significant capital improvements we can anticipate. It rolls into the rates, and I just want to volunteer that, well, we haven't had a rate hearing yet. It's all been part of this, uh, you know, the challenge of the schedule with COVID. Uh, but generally, we would have had this FinCom hearing earlier. Uh, we would have gone through town meeting, and then we go to the Public Works Commission, uh, who is the rate, um, setting authority, uh, to, uh, review, uh, the proposed rate, uh, adjustments. We're looking for, uh, the water side to go up about $25 a year. Uh, the typical, uh, water, uh, customer will spend somewhere, uh, this, this chart's a little, uh, uh, backdated because we don't have data from other systems. This is to compare Concord versus, you know, Bedford, Lexington, Wellesley, and you can see Concord in here. Our average rate is about $533, I believe. It's in, it's in the notes, um, you know, per customer. Uh, but that's average. We also recognize that we have a, uh, conservation-based rate structure, a three structure that's, uh, um, impacts both residents and commercial, um, uh, customers. But the intent is that we believe everybody's, it is entitled to a base level of service that we maintain, a fairly, you know, sort of a, a, um, a very competitive cost. And if they need more water for, um, you know, interests such as outdoor, uh, use or, you know, larger, you know, pools or something like that, uh, they would then pay more per unit, uh, for that, um, what we call sort of more of a, a premium service. Um, and that actually does help offset some of the impact of, uh, you know, the base rate for those who are on fixed income. And, uh, you may not be able to, um, afford that. Our customer profile, uh, you can see here is primarily, uh, residential. We do have mixed use, um, uh, with commercial, uh, customers. Uh, we have, uh, some regional facilities, both MCI.
Alan, you're cutting out for me. I don't know whether that's a general problem.
Me too.
Things, public buildings have a, a competitive rate in that we can interrupt their service if and when we need to during the summer, uh, when we typically have our peak demands, and, and that's one of the incentives of the, uh, conservation-based rate is to reduce the summer peak demand, which really drives costs as far as, um, the amount of resources we have available, um, the, uh, all groundwater supplies. NAGOG, they're generally used during the summer, and there's very little, uh, freeboard as far as, uh, uh, room for failure, um, or, um, you know, mechanical problems. Uh, when we go out and, you know, look at the surveys in town that are completely, uh, performed every, uh, two years, uh, we see that, you know, for the most part, you know, people are very, um, um, pleased with the level of service that's provided. I think it's over 95%, you know, consider it, you know, good or excellent, which is, uh, you know, a, a great thing. Equally, and again, we've, just to go back, we trend that over time, just to see, are we, you know, are we, are we missing something? Are there any upsets? But this is very helpful as far as seeing how we've done over the past, uh, you know, since, uh, two, you know, FY13 through FY19. And then you can see as far as our, you know, price sensitivity to the customers, you can see that, you know, majority believe it is reasonably priced. You know, I think that's all we can ask for. Um, there is a cost for water. People have been realizing that over the last, you know, 20 years, um, that, you know, there's, um, cost to operate the system. And for the, uh, regulatory and water quality purposes, um, you know, we do need to make the investment. So, uh, with that said, I'd argue many of the people who believe are excessively priced are probably those that are using more of the premium water or, you know, the third step in the summer. Um, and it can be fairly costly. We have customers who will spend thousands of dollars, uh, a year with most of it, you know, um, during the summer. But it is something, a service we provide. There's lots of, um, uh, state policies that are, are becoming more and more stringent as far as, you know, providing flexibility to do so. We believe the price signal and some of our conservation initiatives, you know, have helped. And I will say, one metric the state uses, uh, that we have conformed with is a residential gallon per day per capita rate. It's, uh, how much is assigned to every resident? Um, what's your daily use? And the state has a, um, uh, uh, a benchmark of 65. And I think we are, uh, slightly under that on average for our customers. So, um, we think the conservation works. We still work hard to, you know, kind of, uh, create that message and those incentives, uh, but I believe that sort of walks us through at least the overview. And then we can kind of answer some questions you might have on, you know, some of the specifics. So, with that said, um, I also have, because this is a team effort, uh, Bob Hill, who is the, uh, management analyst for the Water Sewer, uh, Division is on the line. If, you know, there's some questions I can't handle, and he might be able to sort of, uh, assist. And Paul Reinhardt as well, who's been, uh, you know, working closely with, uh, the townhouse and the finance group on putting together the budget book. So, that's, that's the overview, and I'm, you know, pleased to take questions as you have them.
Chris.
Hi, um, thank you for your presentation. Uh, it was very clear. I have a couple of questions on the, the large spending that's gonna, that's coming up, uh, focused on NAGOG, and it looks like from your, um, 10-year pro forma, that happens all in, uh, 20 FY. Just looking to see if I get this right here. It's mostly in '22 and '23. Is that correct? It looks like it's about 26, 27 million in spending?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, um, what, two questions. One, that's a dramatic increase, right? These are two huge years of spending. How will your organization manage that much in capital projecting over a two-year period? Are you going to be using your own employees? Are you going to outsource? So that's question one. Question two, how does that hit the rate payers, right? So is there going to be a big spike in bills as they, as debt service comes in? What do you project, I guess, for the rate growth, uh, in 2025, '26, et cetera?
Thank you very much for the question, because I'm going to answer some, and it's going to dovetail into the wastewater as well. But, um, how do we manage these projects? And, and, and the reality is in this industry, we see more and more of these sorts of very technical, um, upgrades. We've been in a, it's not just, um, the construction. Uh, the permitting of these projects, uh, can be Herculean. In fact, the permitting of NAGOG has been a, uh, process that's taken over five years. It's involved almost every level of the state, uh, involving, um, uh, DEP. Uh, it's included archaeological, uh, review. It's included, um, uh, working through other towns, uh, Acton specifically on site plan, reviews and permitting and Conservation Commission activities. A lot of effort, I cannot believe the amount of effort that that takes for permitting alone. We go into the design, which is also very expensive. We're talking about a $20 million initiative at this point, um, with design costs of millions of dollars, um, to, um, get the design proper. We've been working with environmental partners on that. Because of the size of this project, we are, uh, by, uh, law required to have an owner project manager. That's an independent contractor who reviews, uh, with staff, uh, the design team, uh, which is environmental partners. We have an owner project manager that we've hired from Weston and Sampson, uh, who works closely with staff to make sure the design's what we're after. The facilities are built in, there's value engineering included in that. Um, the challenge we have in Acton is the site and constraints that we've had are, are, have been really challenging. And so there's been significant increase in costs, literally based on the land area we have to work with, and some of the constraints that have been imposed, um, through both state and local permitting process. But in-house, I'd like to say and give credit to some of the staff we have, we have someone who's an operations manager within the Water Sewer Division, who we pulled from the private industry. She used to work for a, a private consulting company doing project management. So we have, that's sort of the staffing I was talking about earlier. Having that capability, um, in-house is huge because the costs are so great for some of these improvements. And she is not only helping in the NAGOG, uh, design and participate in the construction. She's been instrumental in the wastewater pump station improvements. And because the threshold is a lot less, that's about $2 million, uh, a project. She is actually serving as the owner project manager for the town, which is fantastic. She works very closely with our operations group, who know what they need. They, they're kind of the hands-on group, so we're very fortunate for, strategically, we have these people in place to help us. But your point is, is dead on that there, there's a lot of risk if you don't do this properly. And so there's lots of layers of, uh, fiduciary protection to make sure we're doing the right thing. The challenge we've had with this particular project, and it dips into your question on our fund balance and how robust it may appear. We knew there was some uncertainty a few years ago. We knew where we were contributing and putting into the reserve fund we thought was more than sufficient, along with the borrowing authorization we had a few years to complete this project, but the completion would have been by now. And because of permitting delays, we are a few years down the road with new constraints have been imposed, and we've seen the costs inflate. So that's, to look at that reserve fund as some buffer, but it's likely we're going to have to come back to town meeting when we're done with the final design to make sure we have sufficient funds. It would be something we'd be looking at, sort of additional borrowing, to actually complete this project. So, you know, to answer, the staffing and oversight, that's what we have. But as far as the fund balance, it speaks to the, the challenge we have in this industry of, um, you know, uh, construction costs. We see it escalated over 25, 30% per year over the last three years. And that, we've seen and heard talking to other systems, that that is not unusual. And now with COVID, there is a, a reality that it may be an adjustment. We don't know if it's going to be up or down, uh, but we are hoping that if we're poised and we have the design and the environment is favorable, that we may do better than what we're anticipating or projected, literally, uh, just a few months ago. But that's the kind of variability that we're looking at, and some of the challenges we have to try and, uh, meet the target of when we're ready to spend the money, what's the industry look like? And, um, that's a challenge, but thank you, that's, uh, thank you for the question.
So that fund, though, that fund would be designated, or you would use it to help, uh, with the NAGOG?
It's drawn down, yes.
Yeah, do you, um, you don't fund depreciation then? Unlike utility group that we just. Yeah. Do you, um, you don't fund depreciation then? Unlike utility group that we just spoke to, they actually have fund balance that they put aside for depreciation. You don't, it looks like.
We have depreciation in our, um, we do depreciate a certain amount.
Right, but you don't fund it. You don't, you don't put money aside to pay for the new stuff you're going to have to buy.
Christine?
Yeah?
Yes, we do fund depreciation in all of our enterprise funds.
You do?
Yes.
So why, why doesn't it show up in the fund balance for water? Carrie?
I'm sorry, I, I just stepped away from the meeting for a minute, and I just came back, so.
Okay. Well, if you take a look at the balance sheet for, you know, that they attach in the appendix, there's no restricted for capital improvements, which I think is where depreciation goes if you're funding it. That's all right. Okay. So my other question, Alan, is uh, the, the revenue. So what will happen to rates?
Right.
Uh, as, you know, in twenty-twenty-five, how big a hit is it going to be?
Okay, so uh, again, when you go to page uh sixty-four, that's that ten-year plan, um, that incorporates revenue projections over, I think it's the next three to four years of five percent increase, dropping down to four percent afterwards. And it's exactly why, you know, the power of that pro forma is, we intend not to have rate shock. I've been talking to other systems recently that they're looking at potentially fifteen percent uh rate increases um to, to react to capital improvements. And they don't have the good fortune of really projecting where their costs are going to be. So the answer is five percent, although we set them year to year, um, we are hoping to keep the uh increase to five percent or less um, over the next ten years. And we see that, I think it's three years of five percent increases, um, which would be adjusted based on what we find the real costs are for NAGOG.
And how would that compare to the last five years? So is that much higher?
Not much higher, no. We've, I don't think, I think when I first got here in two thousand and ninety-seven, there may have been a significant rate increase, like a fifteen percent. It was really significant. But we didn't have a plan before that. And so the former director put together this capital plan, ten-year pro forma, and we realized we were way off. So we do not envision anything like that. And that's the value and power of that pro forma.
Yes, it is. Capital plans are really good. I really like them. I'm a big fan of that, not just for the water group, for the town. I'm a big fan of that. So, so what you're, what you're telling me is that part of the revenue that you'll start to earn in twenty-twenty-one will be in excess of expense, and that will also create reserves that will fund the future. So you're creating a stabilization reserve for, for rates.
Correct.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I think Phil Swain has his hand up.
Yes. Hi, Alan, thank you. Um, we, uh, what about the status of the litigation out at NAGOG Pond? Uh, is that concluded? Uh, is there a chance for an appeal? And, uh, you know, where does that uh stand? If you could summarize that?
So Phil's describing the fact that um, as we were in the permitting process and design of NAGOG, um, the town of Littleton uh was uh challenging uh Concord's rights to uh the water. And they were sort of pointing towards legislation from eighteen eighty-four, an act, uh, which uh, if, you know, we simply had no other laws uh or rules, you know, might apply. Uh, in the eighties, the state decided it needed to manage the water resources of the Commonwealth holistically. So they didn't have turf wars and challenges, you know, much like what we're seeing. And so they um registered various supplies. And Concord has made the case that uh, from the nineteen eighties, we have been in over a hundred years, we've been relying on NAGOG as a critical, you know, resource. Uh, Littleton challenged it, um, or were planning on challenging it. So we ended up um, sort of taking this to a land court to see if they would not um, uh, review, uh, whether it was the uh statute of eighteen eighty-four or the Water Management Act that really dictated uh authority and control of the resource. Uh, Land Court voted last year in favor of Concord's position. Um, we felt, you know, strongly that we were, you know, um, in the right. Um, Littleton, and I will have to say Acton also uh, participated in a joined forces with Littleton because they had some vested interest. If there was a resource to be had, they thought they should be entitled to it. And the original legislation did allow Acton and Littleton's uh rights. Um, but uh, we prevailed, and uh, Acton, I'm sorry, Littleton and Acton are now appealing this. Uh, it was good to go to Land Court, and we all agreed that it might be better if it went to the SJC directly. Um, it's a very interesting case. Uh, we think Concord has very um, a good standing, uh, but it's a um, it's litigation that hasn't been uh, uh, realized in the, in the Commonwealth. And it may have implications as far as the entire Water Management Act and, and how other communities are, are managed. But um, yeah, so Phil, it is presently under appeal, the decision from Land Court, which is, was in Concord's favor.
Thank you.
Uh, Dee.
Hi, Alan, how are you?
Doing well, Dee, how are you?
Good, good. I have a couple of questions. Um, when NAGOG is finished, do you think you will have an adequate supply for our future population?
It is, NAGOG is the adequate supply for our future population. Without it, we're uh, more risk. Um, the reason is, um, NAGOG is, uh, has a potential yield of, you know, it's about a million gallons a day of reliable water. Um, it, uh, we don't have any other source of supply that's close to that. Uh, we have some that are closer, you know, half a million gallons, but it's sort of a um, a portfolio of smaller sources that are routinely um, challenged or compromised uh with, you know, cleaning and maintenance um issues. We'll end up having to replace some of these wells, uh, just because, uh, based on the wear and tear of them. Um, and NAGOG really provides us with the ability to um, optimize treatment. Um, and uh, without it, uh, we're at significant risk. And we've, we've demonstrated this, and we'll probably do it again as far as, you know, slides, you know, with NAGOG, without. Um, but, you know, we, we need to have the ability during the summer to operate without one large supplies online. That will happen. And when it's happened in the last few years, because we haven't been able to draw on NAGOG the way we really need to, um, it becomes a fire drill that most people don't see, but our operators realize of, you know, an emergency, how can we get a pump, you know, company in? How do we replace uh, a VFD that's failed? We don't really have the um, resiliency that we need. And when we do get NAGOG online, and it's able to produce up to one and a half million gallons in a day, we can rest groundwater wells. We can look more holistically at our system and manage it as opposed to just operating whatever is available. And managing means considering environmental impacts, considering water quality, um, a host of benefits, once we can manage the system.
Okay, a couple of other quick questions. Um, you were talking about the emerging contaminants. How, how much has that shifted in the past? Like, when you were starting this so many years ago, um, out at NAGOG, how much has that shifted now? And the financial impact?
It's, it's dramatic, but it's not just NAGOG. And we haven't really seen the next shoe drop on this. But when we talk about these contaminants of interest right now, uh, we're talking about um, uh, measurements of these compounds that take us into parts per trillion. And this is a, you know, most people are familiar with, you know, part, milligrams per liter, parts per million. At one point in time, they went, started getting into um, volatile organics, we're concerned, parts per billion. Uh, well, these compounds have an interest in, you know, through society, it's not just in the water supply, of parts per trillion. And these are things that we've only just starting to establish the methodology to measure. And, uh, you know, at the turn of the century, and we talked about pure water, uh, they talked about water that was clear and chlorinated. And today, it's a very different beast. Um, and that's drives a lot of the cost of production, because it's not just pumping from the ground, it's pumping and treating to various levels depending on the source water quality. And NAGOG is a very well-protected resource. It's protected because Concord's invested money over hundreds of years to own lots of land around it, to ensure we didn't have development and could uh, impinge that quality.
Thank you. Um, one other quick question, which is um, private wells. Um, has there been any action on categorizing them or identifying them throughout the town? The use of private wells for gardening and et cetera?
Um, there is an interest, and it's not just, uh, I think Concord should be interested in all of the water resources, including private wells, ponds, rivers, stormwater, groundwater, surface water. Where the public works is, is going to take a leadership role, I, as far as I'm concerned, to try and integrate all of these things. And uh, because right now, it's done piecemeal, and it's not very efficient. And when we're talking about private wells, um, they do withdraw from the same resources as the, the town in some cases. You know, we know this. It's no surprise, the Concord Country Club has a permit for a well very close to our Dean's well, and we need to manage and, and protect. So um, you know, those people with private wells, there's about five percent rely on it for drinking water purposes, as I mentioned earlier. Ninety-five percent of our community is served with municipal water, so some need it for potable purposes. And there are more and more wells that have been installed for irrigation and outdoor uh use. Now, I'm not going to.
I just missed your, I missed, what percent of our population is on well water?
About five percent.
Five percent, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And they would require the wells for uh, potable use. There are wells that people supplement the town water for drinking water, and they use the um, private wells for outdoor purposes.
Right, right. Okay, we'd go on forever, so I'll stop there.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
From the committee. I don't see any. Um, and uh, I, I don't see anyone with their hand up from the attendees who are still with us. So I think you can move on to the sewer uh system.
It's easier said than done, isn't it? Let me try this.
Okay.
Okay.
Don't mind me if I look under my uh desk, because I heard the mouse. See how he's doing.
As Stephen Crane has said, as soon as we get this technology perfected, we'll no longer need it. But um, let me see. Now, now I got that, hold on. Hmm. It's water. Hmm. Let me, let me, I have to get out of this one second, see if I can bring sewer, sewer. Okay, I should be good here. I promised sewer will be quicker. Okay, are we good?
Great.
Okay. So again, uh, much like the water fund, sewer is enterprise system where we take the uh, uh, we're looking to get authorization to spend a combination of user fees and other special service fees uh towards our uh FY twenty-one.
Quick question on this. Are, are your fiscal year for this really calendar? Just to be?
No, it isn't. Our fiscal year is uh, is the, um, unlike the light plant, we actually operate from July through the end of June.
You do? Okay.
Yep. Uh, and we're also included, and I roll in Article nineteen, which is the sewer, uh, let's see, we did, okay. I'll also touch upon the sewer fund as well in this particular presentation. Um, that is the fund where we collect uh, um, revenue from expanded use or new uses, the people who tie into the municipal sewer system uh to help uh, uh, offer any of the costs for expansion of system for new users. Um, you're all familiar with the, the fact that the uh, capacity challenges in Concord on wastewater is pretty significant by regulatory um limits on uh, the NITDs uh program. But basically, a third of the town is sewed, uh, maybe it's closer to forty percent now, uh, mostly in the downtown areas. Uh, you can see uh, from this locust map, this is the general location of where the municipal sewer is. And again, as Dee had mentioned, when we talk about water resource management, this has a significant impact on how our resources um, function. But uh, two-thirds of the town have private septic systems. So as they draw water, you know, from our system, our supply, they may recharge, you know, groundwater, but more into local watershed. So it's sort of important concept, you know, to be aware. But uh, again, um, only a third of the community is really affected by this um, particular program. Uh, similar to the water, we're looking at the total assets. We have a value of about fifteen point three million dollars. Um, it includes one very advanced wastewater treatment facility off of Bedford um Road. It's the uh, uh, it charges directly to uh, the Concord River. So there's certainly implications as far as the quality goes, uh, discharge going into a wild and scenic river. But we do a phosphorus reduction, and it is a state-of-the-art facility, and it's been working, you know, very well, um, since we did a major upgrade in uh, two thousand and seven-ish. Uh, we have two large uh, pumping stations. A lot of sewers, gravity flow from homes ideally into gravity pipes that range in diameter from uh, eight inch to thirty-two inch. Uh, but oftentimes, they uh, because we can't get all gravity to one location, you have buried depths of pipes of, you know, tens or, you know, thirty, forty feet, you have lift stations in various parts of town. And I'll sort of get into uh, some of the improvements that we've got slated for uh, the Lowell Road Lift Station and the Assavits Station uh by uh Main Street. Uh, again, the question becomes, do we depreciate? Yes, uh, the depreciation went up, you know, significantly after we did the major improvement at the treatment plant in two thousand and seven. It's been uh, you know, dropping, but we do have an allowance for depreciation. The treatment plant of our O and M is primarily uh, contract operations. We have a wooded and current is uh, coming near the end of a ten-year uh, contract ops uh, agreement with the town. Um, and then you'll see, you know, we have a significant contribution, again, from the wastewater arena to the general fund, again, for the support services, much like uh, Concord, uh, much like the water fund. What's notable is, we have very little control, about seventy-one percent of our budget is sort of defined through depreciation, treatment plant, contract ops, and the general fund. Uh, so, you know, the remainder is where we deal with our investments on the pumping collection system that we have. Um, this gives you, um, this actually a visual, uh, basically showing that you can see depreciation, general fund, and contract management um is the significant pieces of our operating uh expense, uh, which is somewhere in the order of three million dollars. Some of the capital improvements that we have uh included in our ten-year plan for FY twenty-one, uh, you will see, uh, this is the two point two million dollars that went towards uh, is going towards the upgrades at Lowell Road, um, right on uh, the Kaiser Road facility. If you drive by uh, tomorrow, you'll see activities begun. Um, they're mobilizing, you know, as we speak. Um, I will say, this is a situation where we went out to bid. I think uh, we were thirty percent more than what our probable cost estimate was, at um, ninety percent. And that speaks to the industry, as I was talking about, sort of the time of when you get a project out into the uh, the market. Um, it was very, very difficult getting contractors. We didn't have a lot of bids on this, this project, and this is a two million dollar project. That may change dramatically very soon. But that's the nature of this, you know, kind of uh, um, not a luck of the draw, but, you know, COVID will have an impact as far as availability and interest, possibly from other contracts. interest possibly from other contractors. The wastewater treatment plant improvements include, we have about $50,000 of, what's the word, security measures that we're putting in over there. We're also doing security upgrades at all our water systems as well. We have an allowance for the meter replacement program to complement the water and light plant. You'll see this investment here, inflow infiltration. We have it at about $200,000 a year. That is, I have a slide I'll show you a little bit later, but that's probably going to go up significantly over the next three to five years, once we do a more thorough assessment of all the pipes, the 33 miles of pipes that we have. Much of it is, you know, close to 100 years of age. The improvements, this is the Lowell Road Pump Station. The facility is, excuse me, was last rehabilitated in the 80s. So it's going to be completely refurbished. We're not going to really change the structure at all, but inside is going to be completely gutted. All new electric, all new process controls, SCADA systems, very large horsepower pumps. We pump over a million gallons of wastewater, up to 2 million during peak periods through this facility up to the treatment plant. So that's where, you know, the preponderance of our capital monies are going to be going towards this station. And then the Aspet, similar, that's over in West Concord. But interesting, all the Aspet water gets pumped to this facility that then gets pumped to the treatment plant. The inflow infiltration is something that we have, we're developing a plan. We submitted to Mast EP just last year for their review through the federal National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permits. EPA and DEP are getting more aggressive. We're requiring communities to do more to remove, in essence, groundwater or roof drains, stormwater from entering the collection system, predominantly because we then end up adding chemicals, treating it, and discharging as part of, and mixing with other waste. So we're putting a lot of money into the elimination of this, both in the right-of-way and the pipes. And then as, we have a program where anytime a home is redone or significant investment made, we're having the owners be responsible for inspection and replacement of the laterals. These are the private services that go to them because that is generally a very challenging source of infiltration that most communities can't get a good handle of. And we've taken advantage of all the investments and investments of, you know, sort of building old homes and building beautiful homes. Well, you need the infrastructure, including water and wastewater to support it. So that program has really helped and, you know, reduced, I will say we have not, we have talked about the challenge of maintaining our, not exceeding our permit capacity, the 1.2 million gallons a day at the wastewater treatment plant. We have done it very judiciously, managed to have some economic growth and development without exceeding the permit. And if we exceed the permit, we really are opening ourselves up to all sorts of new requirements that can be imposed on the town. So we've done a good job. The Public Works Commission's worked very aggressively to manage that. And we're pleased to date, we've been able to, you know, accommodate some of the economic growth development while not exceeding our discharge permit. Sewer rates, it is more expensive to, to collect and treat wastewater than drinking water. As I mentioned, the water, drinking water is about $530 a year on average. The sewer is up, I don't know, I may even have it, yes, $713. So it's a little bit more on the, for the sewer fees. I will say that the increase we're proposing, because we have a fairly healthy fund balance, is only 2% on the sewer users. That's about $14 a year for those customers. We also have a special assessment where very few systems do this, and it takes a lot of administration. But I think it's the fairest way where we base sewer use on your winter water demand. So it's not to inflate it with outdoor water use. And so we actually have an adjustment we make. So it's prorated over the course of a year. So it's not to penalize someone for the very high water use during the summer in this fund. That's just not the way that we're, you know, trying to keep the enterprises separate. You can see comparison rates with our neighbors, Bedford, Lexington, Wellesley, and you can see Concord is, is very competitive. And I think when we get the opinion of our service from, you know, most people don't think a lot about their wastewater until it fails. So, you know, reasonably price is good. And we, I guess I don't have opinion of, okay, I don't have the opinion of service. I'm missing that slot. So I will say, just to compliment, the sewer improvement fund again is a separate dedicated fund. That's where we collect money for new or expanded uses. And that's to offset the cost for having to expand our treatment facility. And I think we've talked, I've been working with a new town manager and staff and then public works to try and figure out how we can be a little bit more creative with, you know, using these funds to potentially get more capacity at the wastewater treatment plant and possibly dovetail that with some integrated water resource management planning to make it, you know, worthwhile, including potential stormwater as well. So I think that's basically, that's the nation of the genesis of the sewer improvement fee. I can go into it in more detail if you like. Otherwise, I'm, you know, here to answer any questions you have on the wastewater.
One quick question. Alan, who pays for the cost of a faulty lateral? Is it the homeowner or the town?
The homeowner.
Okay.
Yes.
When you, when you go along and, and put in new pipes and there's a connection there, if they, if they want to change it, they pay for it, correct?
Yes. Right now on the, both on water fund and sewers, worth knowing this, it's good for people in Concord to understand this. If we do a major improvement, a water main replacement, like we're proposing over in Peter Spring Road neighborhood, that, that whole area, we install new water main, there's no sewer there, we will install the main and the lateral to the property line at that point.
Right. Okay.
And then the owners will be responsible from the property line in. After 50 years or so of service, if they do a major improvement to their home, we would not be back replacing the water main. And at that point, we would have them replace the entire lateral. Because that's when they're spending money on, on a, you know, a fairly pricey home. They're looking for reliable service. And the last thing we need is a problem in the right-of-way or in their property, brand-new home, everything else is new, and then vital infrastructure is failing them. That's just not a good way to go.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Alan, it's Wade Rubenstein.
Can you, can you de- chair it, Alan, so we can see all the participants?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. So can, do you know what the rate of increase has been over time with the sewer improvement fee? And how exactly does that fee get established? I mean, it's increasing greater than the rate of the sewer fee itself. Who said that?
I wish I could, I'm going to go back to that slide if I can. Might be helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, right in here. So basically, the fee was initially set back in the 80s when the town went through a sewer facility plan. That's the state-of-the-art, what are the needs of the town on the wastewater side? There was a need to, there was a lot of money through the state and federal agencies to allow for installation of a advanced wastewater treatment. At that time, the town was very strategic and did not want to, there was the, what I've heard is the philosophy, if you build it, they will come. They decided not to oversize the system. They did not want to accommodate significant economic growth and development. So since the 80s, we've been living with a treatment facility and permits that have not expanded, despite the fact we've had a couple generations of, of expansion of the collection system. In 89 is when they passed the article to have this fee established. And it was somewhere in the order of, I don't know, it was $11, you know, per gallon, based on Title V, a daily max flow. In 2004, that was 20 years after, you know, 1984, we went through another, what they called a comprehensive wastewater master plan. It was an exhaustive study, including many boards, a couple years of work to identify where are we going over the next 20 years. And at that point, I believe the fee went up when it realized we are not going to be expanding the facility. EPA is not interested in seeing us increase discharge, you know, to the Concord River. And it went up. There's been a couple increments of increases. It's always been based on what is the anticipated cost to get X gallons of increased capacity to, you know, the 1.2 million. So in 2013 was the final iteration, well, trying to think of what, I don't have them marked here. But Wade, every time it's been evaluated, it looks at what are the capital costs to treat whatever the needs are. We've identified somewhere between 300,000 gallons a day and 500,000 gallons a day of potential additional capacity. And if we were to realize that, it's kind of like, once we go over the 1.2, we have to accommodate it with possibly denitrification at the treatment plant. That's a very complex new treatment process. We're looking at a groundwater discharge permit at that site, which could allow us maybe 150,000 gallons a day of additional capacity. That alone, which was over five years ago, was over $3 million of probable cost. So I don't know what the cost is. We haven't changed it, but the fee was set to offset those capital improvements to increase the flow. So it's always been based on what would it, what's the cost of expanding the facility? And when I say, it doesn't go up every year, it's not part of the rate increase. Every so often, we have a third-party consultant come in who understands the state-of-the-art technology, understands the cost of expansion. They come up with an assessment that the fee is based on. Our goal and my hope would be to potentially leverage those funds to be a little bit more efficient with maybe increasing the capacity of the treatment plant with modest modifications, potentially that that with some improvements potentially, you know, that are, you know, supplementing stormwater in areas that may need it, may improve quality of stormwater. So that we're, we're taking those funds, we're creating capacity, and we're proving the environmental protection of Concord. But that's, that's the long story of the fee being set and kind of what we intend to do with it. But that's in reserve until we need to make those expansions. We are also maintaining our permit by investing some of those fees in the INI to reduce, when the, when the system was installed, it wasn't intended to be as tight as regulators would like it to be today. So we are actually increasing some capacity by doing things like lining certain sections, so there is no infiltration. But in 1900s, a little bit of dilution was not a problem, you know, when the waste management was very simple. Went to sand beds over at the existing site. And if 50% of it was groundwater, it didn't matter as much. Now, 10% matters. And it's making the system tighter. So that's also allowed some of this economic growth and development to occur without putting the rest of the town at risk. That's how we've been able to maintain our, our permit, I believe, some of that investment into the INI.
Thank you. I do have a question. A good chunk of your expense is a contract to manage the wastewater facility. What's the contract renewal? How long is the current contract go for? And when are you going to be up for renegotiation?
So it, I believe we have about a year to a year and a half before we will end up, you know, probably within six months, we'll start pulling together, potentially an RFP of some sort. We'll probably get a third-party consultant on board who does this, you know, for a living, knows where we might be able to, you know, kind of sharpen our proposals. We have to look at all options. We have to look at what town resources do we have? Do we have the sophistication to take it over? It was literally run by the town before I got, this was in 95, I think the town actually had its own operators managing it. It was 95, 96 when they went to contract operation. So we've got to evaluate, you know, where is the best value for Concord? Is it to, you know, through a third party? Is it, you know, in-house resources? And how do we make it competitive, you know, based on, you know, it's not just the operations people, but the depth of the technical people who can help with improvements and whatnot. So we'll be looking at that over the next year. And we will be likely, if we go out, you do need to enter into a long-term contract because people don't want, they need to invest in staffing. They want to know kind of what improvements they want to make. And the longer the investment, the more likely they're going to manage it properly and not just, you know, run it until it's, you know, falling apart and then hand it back to the town, you know. So that operations and manager I spoke about earlier also is involved with any of the capital improvements there. Part of the contract requires them to invest certain amount of money into that facility. And we work with them to make sure it's prudent.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee?
I, I have one, Dean.
Okay.
Okay. So going back to the balance sheet again, to the reserves. So you have about, you have about 11 million in cash. You have, half of that is in your funded depreciation. The other half is unrestricted. And you have about a million or so that's for, for debt service. So how did you end up with 5 million in, in unrestricted? And how are you going to use it?
Is that over the 10-year period we're talking about?
This was, this is what was there at, at June 30th of 2019. I don't know what it is today.
Okay, okay.
That's the balance sheet that I have, yeah. You're going to spend about 10 million in, in the next five years in, in capital expenditures. And you're not going to borrow. But, you know, so I can see why, because you have 11 million in cash. But how did you get there? And does that, what does that say about the profitability in this organization or the, or the rate schedule that we're using? Are we collecting too much that we end up with a big pile of cash?
We looked at the, again, by plugging into the pro forma, we were trying to ensure that we do not, we have appropriate reserve for the anticipated capital. We ran different values. Last year, we only went up 1% on the sewer. And I think when we project out, we are at 2% over the next, you know, 10-year.
Right.
And as I mentioned, as far as the regulatory environment, we do anticipate things will get more aggressive as far as, you know, our phosphorus. It could include other compounds. For instance, we talked about these emerging contaminants, it could become something that we end up, you know, looking at in our waste stream. So it's part of the uncertainty of where the regulatory environment's driving us. But we do know we're probably going to be spending, as I mentioned, on the INI, we have $200,000, we're kind of looking at that short term. I fully expect that's going to go up to millions of dollars when we identify the needs. And that's where we're going to do liners on 32-inch, you know, collector mains. So that can be spent pretty quickly once we find the problems.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I mean, you know, again, I, I think it's heavy. You know, if you're got, your balance isn't, just looking at the cash numbers, right? So you've been around 10 million. As you spend over the next five years, based on the pro forma, you go down as low as like 5 million, and then you start coming back up. So, and that's just, you know, so you, again, some of that is funding depreciation. It may be for debt service. Well, you don't really have any more debt service, it's not debt service. But you have a pretty healthy cash balance. So I don't know, I'm going to keep asking that question. What are you using the money for? And are you collecting too- What are you using the money for and are you collecting too much?
Dean, can I, this is Stephen Green. And Chris, the answer is going to keep being the same.
Okay.
The cash balance helps with, with, with lowering interest rates. And for, and for, and for emergency, and for emergency purposes and for flattening rate fluctuations in, in times where we have either unexpected or planned major infrastructure costs. It's the answer across the board for all of reserves, especially with enterprise funds.
Okay, but, you know, the reserves are good. I'm a fan of reserves. But, you know, at some, there needs to be maybe some math around how much you actually need, right? We don't, we don't grow them to the sky, right? We keep them, we try and make sure.
No, usually, usually the bond rating agencies tell you how much they like to see.
Okay. And do they count this twenty million when they're looking at Concord's bond rating agencies or?
I mean, I don't know if, I, I don't, I don't think I can get that level of detail on it, but generally they tell you what they like to see for levels of reserves.
Okay.
Okay, well, Alan, I think that brings you to a conclusion. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I apologize for the technical difficulties.
Oh, no problem.
I'll have it for you. Have a good night. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Dean, there may be some public questions.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Are there any attendees? I don't see any attendees with their hands in the air.
It's like the Q and A.
In the Q and A list, I do have a question. I have a question here from Matthew Johnson. Would you like to just speak to this rather than have me read it out? And please introduce yourself in the normal way for a hearing.
Sure, I'm Matt Johnson. I'm Chair of the Planning Board, but I'm speaking on my behalf. But it actually is based upon that experience that I'm bringing this up, which is when, you know, over a few times in the past few years, I've heard the wastewater capacity issue brought up as a kind of a break on some projects that have been proposed in town. And it does seem like a constraint that we should think about in terms of the overall opportunity cost benefit to the town rather than a single agency's budget. And, you know, we have a number of future projects such as a transit-oriented development that's being proposed around Thero Depot. You know, they're coming up over the next few years and that's just one example. You know, how can we evaluate and motivate the infrastructure investment that's needed to town's overall development goals? You know, should that be a finance committee responsibility? Because it's a holistic, you know, town capacity or capability rather than just, you know, our, our sewer capacity? Because it just seems unfortunate that just that one constraint is driving the development or lack thereof in the town.
I, I can answer that.
Well, let's, why don't you try?
Okay. Well, I, 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 that was my version of raising my hand, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
It's really fine.
So Matt, the constraint on sewer is really around our permit from DEP. And so until they allow us to have more capacity, that's, we're really restrained in what we can do. And so that's, and that's not really, and I don't, I, I don't, by my read, it's not a finance committee thing. It's, it's the Public Works Commission and the Town Administration. But it's really a science matter, not a financial matter because of the, of the permit. And Alan, I don't know if you want to expand upon that or make sure I have that right?
So I have a comment on that. Is that something for which we would normally have some sort of standing application to just get more capacity from the DEP? Or do we periodically approach the DEP and say, we'd like to expand? We're, we're at X percentage capacity. We really are trying to manage this. How do we, how do we approach an expansion at that level?
We have, we, there is a process. We've been negotiating with EPA and DEP, by the way. It's a joint permit. We're one of three states in the, in the nation where we, we have two masters. But we've been seeking an increase in our permit for many, many years. The last application, you have to renew this permit. There are cycles. I can't remember if it's five or seven. I always get the water and wastewater, you know, kind of mixed up. But the last application we submitted to EPA, we provided them with a lot of information demonstrating that we believe that we could increase the flow through our facility while maintaining the load. And the load is the pollutants. By removing pollutants from the flow, we'd be able to maintain our permit. And we did it with a capacity of under ten percent. We had administrative process, something they should be able to entertain and approve. And it's been over a year since we've heard anything, you know, from the regulators. EPA is very far behind on its, you know, reissues of permits. But I do believe that, you know, the solution for Concord is going to be a combination of efficient spending on the wastewater side. What I tell people is I don't always want to do what we can get permitted to do because it's expensive and the environment doesn't benefit. But there's a system.
So, yeah, I mean, I, I think if I could just, the, to answer, Dean, to answer your question, it's not really, it's not up to us to say we can, you know, increase our, expand our capacity. And you would need to expand the plant to expand capacity because the load and the effluent and flow are all calculated by EPA and DEP. I think Alan is, what Alan's saying is we're trying to recast how that's calculated. So we could increase our capacity, which we believe we could manage without having to do a costly expansion to the plant. But as we sit here tonight, you, under the existing permit rules, you would have to expand the plant, which is really expensive. Does that, does that help?
That helps. In an ideal world, we would be also trying to expand the public sewer capacity, you know, extent to the public sewage in town. So we weren't relying on septic for two-thirds of the properties in town. You know, and, and again, maybe there is some way to really leap forward on this and make it, make economic sense if we take the same attitude as when the system got started, you know?
What we just offered has to make environmental sense first, then economic sense. And I think the community needs to come to grips with both of those things because they are at odds. And I think the community has, you know, both interests in mind and it's a matter of getting the right balance.
I just think we could make a better economic, both environmental and economic, you know, case for public sewer compared to septic.
There, there is a debate that onsite disposal is environmentally preferable. I don't make it, but that's, you know, part of the challenge we have. We have to partner with the environmental groups, the watershed interests. And I don't disagree with the need. I can tell you it's just a challenge when there's competing interests. We just want to serve the public. I think we can do it, maybe if we look at stormwater as well, we can probably find the right balance. But we got to get more creative than what we've been in the past. And it's not just Concord. This is a universal problem.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the public? I don't see, I don't see any further questions and I don't see any hands raised. So I think I can now say thank you, Alan, for your presentation.
Say thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay, next up on our agenda is, I think Kate Hodges is going to present our expenditure for the PEG access services. That's Article twenty-two in your warrant.
Hello, everyone. Kate Hodges, Deputy Town Manager. Just going to share my screen. Sorry. Okay, so Article twenty-two seeks to request acceptance of an appropriation of three hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, which will be used to manage the PEG Cable Services Division of the town, also known as Minuteman Media Network or M M N. What's going on here? PEG stands for Public Education and Government and it is from a franchise agreement with Comcast Incorporated subsequent to the Cable Act of nineteen eighty-four. PEG channels are not mandated by federal law, but are rather a right of towns or whomever the franchise authority may be, who can elect or not to accept a certain amount of money from a cable provider to be used for public access channels or stations given to them by the cable companies. So Concord chose to exercise their option to have PEG for many years now. And the town took over the operation as a town department in October of two thousand and eighteen. As with all departments in the town, the town manager serves as the appointing authority and the deputy town manager serves as a department head, providing budgetary oversight and supervision of the division managers. Concord's Public Information and Communications Manager is Minuteman Network's primary division manager. She serves as the executive director, in the executive director function, rather, overseeing the daily operations and the support staff. Our goals for the upcoming fiscal year surround the ideas of increased participation, community involvement, and increased broadcasting capabilities. Long-term, we want to ensure that we're being fiscally responsible and seek to build our fund balance up such that we would be able to cover any large-scale renovations, community needs, or improvements as required. On this slide, you can see our operating revenue projections for fiscal year twenty-one are about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. This amount includes a projected revenue from Comcast, which equates to three hundred and thirty-two thousand. We're projecting a five percent decrease in revenues from last fiscal year because over the past five years, we've seen a staunch twenty-seven percent decrease in our Comcast revenues. We use this amount in order to budget our projected revenues in the most conservative manner possible. New this year, however, we have an additional revenue stream transferred into the PEG budget from the Light Plan's Telecom Division, which provides broadband services to Concord residents and may in part be one of the catalysts for the decrease in the Comcast revenues. Dubbed as a pile-off or payment in lieu of franchise, this amount is calculated at one point five percent of the broadband revenues collected in Concord, up to sixty thousand dollars. So for calendar year twenty, we were projecting a total of one point two six million in broadband revenues collected. And so the pile-off is about nineteen thousand dollars, which is the amount that you see. The largest expense to the PEG operation, as is typical of many departments, is personnel and personnel-related expenses. This amount equates to a total of three hundred and nine thousand for fiscal year twenty-one and includes the positions of station manager, media technician, or PEG's IT guru, lead producer, and our education coordinator. The education coordinator position is currently vacant and we have not filled it and will be holding on filling it until the governor releases his orders and allows a return to workplace. And we're sure that the school will be back in session starting in the fall. Once we have those things in place, we can move forward with the hiring of that position. If not, we can revisit. Other operational expenses equate to about twenty-eight thousand dollars and they include, new this year, an eighteen hundred dollar transfer to the general fund from the PEG fund to cover the cost of the human resources-related expenses associated with M M N's operation, including the hiring of part-time and per diem videographers and running certain ads for us throughout the year to try to get other part-time folks to cover meetings and events. With that said, we are projecting a net balance after expenses of about eighty-nine thousand dollars. We plan to allocate seventy-six thousand, four hundred and fifty for capital expenses. This slide shows our capital expenses, which were derived a few months ago and obviously pre-COVID. We'll be revisiting this should our economic situation change. The capital budget of seventy-six, four fifty is allocated here. The amount is equal to twenty-seven, I'm sorry, twenty thousand dollars, which is allocated for planned equipment replacements, maintenance, and software updates. These replacements are cyclical. They seek to allocate small amounts of capital each year to replace old and outdated technology on a five-to-seven-year progression. We've allocated an additional fifty-seven thousand dollars for potential larger-scale projects in and around Concord facilities to improve and expand upon M M N's offerings. These initiatives, we hope, will be reviewed and vetted through the Public Access Advisory Committee or PAC. Some considerations and pilot programs mentioned by the M M N staff and other members of the community have included upgraded cameras and on-demand technology within the Ripley Administration Building to make it easier for school committee meetings to go live. Traveling studio equipment from either mini cameras, iPads, or iPhones with video capabilities or some type of van or other mobile studio, similar to that of a news van or a news truck, which other communities in our area have. That is basically the presentation. We are requesting favorable action on Article twenty-two and I'm happy to answer any questions, should there be any.
If you could take that down, Kate, then I can see the, the group. Are there any questions regarding the PEG access budget, et cetera? I, I have, I have one question. You have fifty-seven thousand in your capital list of various things. There had been a lot of discussion some time ago about how we would allow public access to the, to the studios for public use when it's in the school building and you need to be vetted and you shouldn't be in a school building, you know, unattended or whatever. Has there been any further discussion of that problem? And how we manage our way through that so that we can, so that the public has a place they can go that does not have to necessarily interact with students in a high school setting?
Yeah, we spent a great deal of time last fall actually going through this with the superintendent in the school committee and have been able to have a, a use agreement or, and the use agreement involves taking some additional steps that were not in place before through CCTV, including a doorbell and a sign-in system. And also having the crash bar that is on the door that leads into the high school flipped around so that people could get out that way, but you can't get in to the school from that way. We've also said that people during the school hours need to sort of call ahead or sign up or, or create some type of appointment where they can come in and they need to always be with a staff member. Any students that come down during the school day or immediately after school need to be vetted by a teacher or an advisor first, introduced by that teacher, meaning the teacher brings a student down, introduces them to the, the staff member, and then develop a plan for what they're supposed to be working on. No staff member is allowed to be in the studio with a student one-on-one. We always have to have two people there. And we installed security cameras in and around the studio, including the hallway, which are able to monitor people coming in and out of the doors, but also the activity that's happening there should, should there be any issue. We did have a few people that came and a couple of senior citizens and someone that was working on a long-scar, long-term project that we had sign in. And, and they were with a staff member and that seemed to work fairly well. And so that, that's our hope. And our, our hope with the education coordinator position is to have that be expanded so that they're working directly with someone in the school as well. So, but we have, that's part of the, the traveling studio. I, is that if we're able to bring some type of mini studio equipment to people. But I think that that needs to be vetted by the, by the committee.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee? I see there's one person queued. I, I want to recognize Carlin Reed. Carlin, can you introduce yourself again? And you're welcome to speak.
Sure, thanks. Carlin Reed, again at Woodson. I'm on the PEG Access Committee, but speaking on my own behalf, since we've not been able to meet to come up and really talk about this budget. Kena, I want to let you know that my personal opinion is your budget looks really good. You did a good job on it. I know you're smiling, you're surprised. You did a really good job. I like the goals. I like the approaches. I've already expressed some questions about that peel-off. And when we do get to meet, one idea that I want to bounce off your head and the rest of the committee members is about creating a low-income discount broadband program that will use some of those funds so that the, about thirty, thirty-five households can have access to broadband that don't have. broadband that don't have it now or are paying too much for it. We found in our PEG survey that about half of the viewers, like what we're doing right now, watch online. So having broadband access is important for PEG access. I see that connection. Anyway, I just want to let you know that I think you did a pretty good job this year. That's it.
Thank you.
So I am, I'm sorry, I have one other question that I'm going to come back around to. The access fee that we received from Comcast, you listed it in your slides as being 4.8% of their billable revenue. Is their franchise based on cable, and they sell additional services, but, you know, we're competing with them on the broadband side? I don't think, you know, maybe Verizon competes with them. I don't know how much that competes anymore on the telephone side, but they have a package deal. You can get three different types of services. Is that 4.8% on all the revenue, or is it just on the cable revenue?
It's on cable and cable-related services. So if you have expanded cable or basic cable, that's what determines it. But if you have one of the bundle packages, then, you know, they parcel that out separately. But if you were to have, say, basic cable but expanded internet, it would not be, we would, we do not get 4.8% of the expanded internet, which is how we came up with the 1.5, because, of course, the light plan and broadband is not giving television, and so it wouldn't be fair to be taxing them at the same rate, the 4.8, as television services. So that's how we kind of came about those numbers.
And I guess kind of a corollary question is, when we offer broadband within the community, we aren't violating their franchise because we're really not offering television. Their franchise is for television, and they just happen to offer broadband. Is that correct?
Absolutely, yep, correct. Coincidentally, just new last year, we actually get 2.8% of the revenue collected for the on-demand movies, too. So if people are home and in quarantine, if you have Comcast and would like to catch up on your movies.
Okay.
Kate, Kate, question.
Yep.
This is also true of Verizon FiOS, correct?
Correct, but we do not have, we don't have a franchise agreement with Verizon in town.
Verizon does not have any fiber in town?
Correct, yep. They haven't come out this way, although the Verizon Wireless representatives have said, you know, sort of in passing when just talking about cellular connectivity, that there's a strong push to sort of not have only one game in town type of thing. So that should be interesting if it comes through.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to the, but I think you're still up for the BD Center. So that is Article 23 in your warrant, and let's jump right in.
Great. So we have Recreation Director Ryan Kane on with us tonight. I'm wondering, Chris, if you could please, if he's not already, I can't really tell, make him a presenter?
I think he's already, he's really already on as a presenter.
Oh, perfect, okay. So Ryan will be sharing his screen, and, you know, I don't think that I, I'm speaking out of turn to say that the COVID pandemic has hit the recreation department, in my opinion, possibly the hardest, as far as the town departments, in that they rely, you know, 95% on fees that they collect for services. And of course, having to, you know, cancel the last part of their Carousel preschool and effectively close the BD Center has been very, very difficult. And the furlough, the only furloughs that we've had in town have been from recreation, and it's been significant. And so the presentation that you are going to be hearing tonight is based on what we would have given to you back, you know, when we were slated to come in and sort of trying to move forward and doing some things and not necessarily having this pandemic to deal with. And so Ryan and his team and I have been working very, very hard on a, an analysis of the type of hit, essentially, that the fund balances are going to take. And it was interesting to listen to some of the committee talk tonight about sort of the higher fund balances. And I can tell you, in an instance like this, the recreation revolving account had about a million-dollar fund balance, and there's a couple in BD, and, you know, we're already seeing a decline in revenue and lost revenues, you know, creeping up into the $700 to $750,000 mark. And so it's significant, and so I suspect that the presentation that went and if we have a town meeting and the numbers that we bring could be different, and I just think that in the interest of full transparency, you know, I want the board to know that, and Ryan wants the board to know that.
Can I jump in, Kate? Or Dean, Mr. Chairman? Because I think, you know, to build on Kate's point, she's absolutely right. You know, when you come to the enterprise funds, you know, water, sewer, and electricity as utilities, as necessities, aren't going to be as impacted by this. But Kate's right, this is the one enterprise fund that is, or the one enterprise fund, the one enterprise, the one government function funded by enterprise funds, sorry, that is going to be most impacted. And the federal government has said they're coming out with guidance on summer camps, for example, and the state is going to have additional information on summer camps. As we talk about reopening the government, reopening our economy, and they talk about doing it in a phased way, you know, are gyms going to be something that are going to come back later because of, you know, the way people work out and droplets and all that other stuff, perhaps? And so there are very specific ways in which the current uncertainty makes what we're presenting tonight something that should be, you know, understood as a snapshot of where we were before a pandemic hit. And I think this, and I do think that these funds will probably change the most, or hopefully the federal or state government will provide assistance for recreation programs and get us back to where we were. But I just want, you know, if you read the news about slow reopening or summer camps, that directly impacts what we're doing here. Just wanted to give the PSA.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Ryan, you ready to go?
Everybody hear me okay?
Yes, well, I can.
Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. I also want to, there's Ryan Kane, the Recreation Director, joined tonight by Anna McEwen, the Assistant Recreation Director, and Andy Dutton, our BD Center General Manager. Also want to thank the entire recreation team for the efforts they put in through these past few tough weeks. We've been coming up with all sorts of different plans and different scenarios and kind of playing a little bit of a guessing game, and also need to thank the Recreation Commission, who we vetted this budget by beforehand in the town manager's office as well. And in front of you, you see our mission statement that had been updated about a year and a half, two years ago. Just to get started on the, to, you know, immediately address the impact of COVID-19, we're not going to break into it into complete discussion, but the department immediately took an approach that the participants weren't going to bear the financial expense. Any classes that were missed, programs that were missed, were fully refunded for the portions that were missed. The BD Center was not, we immediately decided not to charge for membership. The only charge we have is if you have a recurring monthly membership, we're charging your account $1 a month right now to stay active during this time. Other gym centers decided to try to carry through. We kind of went with the philosophy of, we're not giving you the product right now, so we're not going to charge you for that product. We have been offering virtual exercise classes through BD. The recreation team is also assisting out with local businesses where possible. Beth Williams, our newly visitor center tourism manager, has been assisting the town finance department and the local businesses and going through some loan applications. And just for some fun this evening, two recreation staff members did a Disney trivia with Trails End, and they were dressed up as Anna and Kristoff from the Frozen movies. The administrative team is following local and national resources, Mass Park and Recreation Association, National Park Association, American Campus Association, Mass Office of Travel Tourism, U.S. Swimming, and just really hearing the concepts of what's happening, what's happening in other states that are starting to come online, how are they handling their pools, their gyms, their fitness centers, and just really trying to build up different options and different ways that we can potentially put together a plan forward to the town manager's office and some recommendations. And we also submitted a pretty extensive COVID-19 impacts to the town manager's office and the finance director for review that chose the financial impacts based on the programs being canceled and some recommendations that we put out there for cost savings for both current status and for future forecasts as well. As Kate had said, COVID-19 is going to impact recreation functions, as Stephen said as well, that pretty immediate. But looking forward and trying to forecast is very difficult for us, too. We could range the gamut from very low participation to being in high demand if childcare situations come on and high levels, and people are looking to get back into health and wellness potentially. So we're looking at all different gamuts of how we can be impacted in the long term from this. So the rest of the presentation is really what we had presented prior to COVID-19 and kind of where our vision, where we were going forward with the department. Just quickly, recreation, I know we're going to talk a lot of numbers, but recreation's a people business, and the graph above just kind of shows you the impact we're making in the community with individuals and people getting out and enjoying their free time, their quality of life, and enjoying their recreational moments. Some of the numbers of note is 104 unique individuals in our master swim program. Last year at BD, our visits were up 22%. We had 126,000 visits to the center. We have 59 unique individuals in our pickleball program, and we had 519 unique individuals in our summer camp program. Department accomplishments in 2019, we've continued with facility upgrades at the BD Center, the cardio room received new floor and treadmills. We did the White Pond startup with the restrooms and trailers and the guard shack, and we also were involved in the Ride Out Phase Two completion. On some program highlights, we updated our registration software to MyRec, is a user-based, web-based format that is much more friendly for the users to use, a lot more typical shopping for individuals. Our new visitor center tourism manager was highly involved in a lot of activities and was highly involved in the implementation of Little Women Week in Concord in celebration of the movie's release, and we had our first successful summer of operation at White Pond Beach. Budgets managed by the recreation department, we manage three general fund budgets, the Hunt Gym, the Visitor Center Building, and the 55 Church Street Building budgets. We're also involved in the capital projects budgets. Examples of those, some of those are Ride Out Phase Two and the White Pond Construction. And we have two programming accounts, Recreation Revolving and the BD Swim and Fitness Enterprise Fund. The Recreation Revolving account had a fund balance of $1,098,000 as of June 30, 2019. Was considered a healthy fund balance, and we were, had been being told by the auditors to try start spending that down, actually, was one phase we were going through at one point in there. The budget goals for this year, these will be reiterated across the BD budget as well as to increase wages for the minimum wage impact, facility investments at the Duro Park for future programs, which was a capital investment, and to keep our programs affordable is really what we're looking to maintain. Budget driving factors, that increase in minimum wage will impact the recreation budget by $40,000 this year. We have general fund transfers of $205,000 out of the revolving account, and we had capital projects planned for $230,000. Are the major budget driving factors. We also do provide financial assistance of $145,000 annually in the revolving account, and most of that gets recorded as a lost revenue. Very limited of that comes from grant funding. This is general fund transfer history. It has grown a little bit over the last few years, but our revenues have grown simultaneously during that time as well. This is just a recap of the financial assistance that we provide in 2019 school year program and summer camp program. We had 74 unique individuals apply for the financial assistance, and they received $145,000 of discounted services. We also provide financial assistance along to the Concord employees for summer camp, and this is a two-year look at those discounts for summer 2018 and 19. We had 41 unique individuals, children in the program from 26 families, and that saved the town employees a discounted amount of $90,000 there. This is a recreation fund revenue and expenditure history. You could see that the revenues have continued to increase from approximately $1.5 million to $2.2 million. The major expenses that have increased over time have been the capital projects, which is something that we have taken on recently, started really in fiscal year 18, 19, and doing some capital projects to do some enhancements that would improve recreation programs across town. That was kind of coming from the drive and the director from the auditor saying that they wanted us to spend down the fund balance a little bit. And additionally, the increase of the general fund transfers over time has been the major drivers on the expense. Hunt operation bottom line that we're looking at for fiscal year 21 showed a loss of $218,000. That was mostly driven from the $230,000 in capital projects that were geared for fiscal year 21. The basic operation of the Hunt budget, typically, we budget out to break even, and we do a little bit better than that, is how we do most of our budgeting there. BD Swim and Fitness Center, which is actually Article 23 in an enterprise fund account, the fund balance for BD as of June 30, 2019, $2,795,000, fairly healthy fund balance. Budget goals for that fiscal, this fiscal year is to increase our wages with minimum wage impact, continue with facility enhancements, and increase membership. And we were looking to talk about a staff member focused on marketing and selling memberships. And again, to keep memberships and programs affordable. We've really held the line in memberships and programs for about a two, three-year window right now, because when I first got here on the townwide survey, the BD membership was considered to be overpriced on the reaction from that, and that is drastically changed on what we've seen back in response for that. Driving factors, again, the effects of minimum wage increase will be $25,000 this coming year, capital projects $110,000, and the depreciation expense of $400,000. General fund transfers have stayed pretty consistent over at the BD Center. You can see the path from fiscal year 16 to fiscal year 21. Employee discounts given to the BD Center, we have 24 town employees utilizing that program, and we discount about, oh, to $16,000 of discounts on an annual basis. Also, at the BD Center, we get a lot of use from the high school, particularly the high school swim team, and we, there's no charge in that based on the original agreement, but just to put an estimated use value to that, we gauge that to be at about $28,000 to $29,000 of estimated value for what the high school swim team is utilizing the BD Center for based on the hours. Looking at the BD Center budget over time, here, you can see the revenues have stayed very flat. You haven't seen that increase in revenues. The expenditures have also, for the most part, stayed flat with the exception of the depreciation costs is something that has continued to go up, and that is something that goes back into our fund balance as well. Personnel over time has actually gone down. From fiscal year 11, we had $1.2 million to, you know, in fiscal years 19, we were down to almost $1 million. So we have actually been on a less use of personnel. We had some layoffs a few years ago. That was a major impact within that as well, but we have kept the But we have kept the personnel costs pretty static over time. BD operating budget, bottom line for fiscal year 21, does show after investment income of a net income of just over $25,000. And that is, again, just incorporating the depreciation expenses in that as well in the operating expense. We are proposing a new position for this year. We proposed it to the town manager's office. It has not gone in front of the personnel board. First, the first step was kind of to go through and get the budget approved and get the funding and then to go seek the approval for the position. We are looking for a marketing and sales manager. We believe we've had missed opportunities and have room for growth there. And we haven't had an individual focused on selling memberships since the facility opened originally, the first two years that the facility was opened. Examples of that, some of those missed opportunities is, you know, our artist swim team of the 222 participants, 135 are BD members. So we're missing out on individuals there and showing the BD value to them. We also see a missed opportunity with the family memberships. I'll show you that in the next slide. But we would look to bring our goals up from family membership up to approximately 400 family memberships in a two-year window. And on an annual basis, that's going to be $250,000 in new revenue for us, for us to get from that roughly 250 family memberships to 400 family memberships. The next slide shows you the membership trends. The area I want you to really focus on is that family category. From 2008, we were at approximately 900 family memberships. In 2018, we're at 280 family memberships. A lot of those families have either graduated out and taken on either couple or individual memberships, but we have not done a good job of backfilling those memberships. The BD general manager, Andy Dutton, and the staff have done a hyper-focused job of trying to make the facility much more family-friendly. It did have a reputation probably three or four years ago of not being so family-friendly. And we're really trying to focus on that and try to find better ways to be accommodating and more enticing to families to bring those memberships up. We don't think we'll get back to that original start that, when the facility opened of those high numbers. But for us to get back to 400 family memberships is going to be something that's going to put us in a healthy status for that facility financially and accomplishing what the BD Center is geared to is to be providing that resource out to the community for all members of the community. So that's it on those two budgets. Like I said, there's the BD enterprise fund budget and additionally, the recreation revolving
If you could disable your screen share, that would be appreciated. Are there any questions from the committee? Mary?
I have a question. First of all, I want to say that I really, I recognize and I really appreciate Kate and Ryan, the work that you've done. I know that you've been hit really hard and I appreciate how you've reacted. But I did read the enterprise book that was done before all this happened. And I have a few questions that I'm hoping that you can help me think through. With the BD Center, as you mentioned, Ryan, revenues have been flat for many years. And one of the reasons that you show a net income is because of the investment income you're earning on your fund balances and you're thinking of hiring a sales manager. And I'm wondering if, if you've thought of, instead of hiring a sales manager, when things get back to normal, I know I'm way ahead now. If doing maybe a competitive analysis, hiring a consulting company to do a competitive analysis would be money well spent. And I can't believe I'm actually recommending spending money. But as opposed to just bringing someone in at a relatively modest salary and expecting them to either resurrect memberships that you've lost, I wonder if it might be a good time to pause and think about what's happening in the industry, who, what are our competitors doing? It's just an idea I'm throwing out there for you to think about. I don't know if you have any comments on that. Have you thought about that or?
Well, I welcome it. We, we haven't brought in a consultant. We utilize our assistant general manager, TJ Laocas, constantly is finding out what other fees are being charged at other locations, not necessarily the complete breakdown of an industry analysis that a consultant would do and really comparing what, what is being offered and what's playing out on everything there. So I wouldn't say we're close to anything like that. It's certainly a good concept. Where we were looking at the individual is, we just, when we downsized on staff, we just haven't had the bodies and the time to pick up the phone and make the phone call to the people who have left and asked why and asked if they can entice them back to come back and/or, you know, to individuals who came in and did a three-month visit, three-month pass, you know, we should be really following up with them and saying, you know, what is it going to take for you to join here? We never want to be the hard sales type of place like a lot of the box stores are that you see the phone number pop up and you're horrified that you don't want to take the calls. But we should be at least making those one or two phone calls and getting back and with individuals that is, you know, prepared and planned and trained on how to, to, you know, communicate to people about how the benefits can be there for them and what that would be.
Can I just say before, sorry, this is Kate Hodges again, but the year before Ryan came, they, and I believe that was like my first year here, upon the retirement of the former recreation director, they hired a marketing consultant. So, and it was based on the fact that they were seeing a steady decline, as Ryan showed in the family memberships.
Great.
They hired a firm that, that came in and really looked at not necessarily how much they were charging, they were tasked with, why are we seeing a decline? And I can tell you that, you know, the report was semi-inconclusive, but part of it was that people did not feel like BD was family-friendly, one. And, and two was that the newness was wearing off and it was never the focus and had not been the focus of anyone to do something that continuously makes it look like it's new. So, you know, when BD was new, everybody wanted to be supportive of it. And, you know, even if they only went three times a year, they figured like they were, you know, contributing to this wonderful community asset. And then, you know, a decade later, you know, it's not as new and the people, I think the perception is, well, it's up and running, it's doing fine. And, and, you know, that is somewhat true. But part of what we were hearing is that, you know, most places that are fitness and gyms and whatever have someone dedicated to that kind of membership. And so this has been something that we've had for years.
Yep.
But I'm not sure this is the year, frankly, that we're gonna, we're gonna be able to pull that off, but.
Right. Okay.
Can I, so Dean or Mr. Chairman, can I just?
Sure.
So one of the things we've done as a part of analyzing the town's finances internally is look at open positions we had heading into COVID-19. And we did talk about this position before that and the reasons that Ryan and Kate have articulated, it was, it seemed like a pretty good proposition because of the historic like flat-line trends and really needing to try a different approach. There are many positions that we had open that are not going to, that we are not pursuing fulfillment of because of the uncertain financial times. This position I am, I'm inclined to go forward with because of the revenue loss and impact to BD. And if we agree that the BD Center is going to be a Town of Concord asset going forward out of this crisis and we, and we agree that it needs to generate revenue sufficient to meet its expenses, then this position has never been more important.
Yeah, I wasn't, I actually wasn't debating about the position. I was just wondering the timing and if there was something we could do ahead of it that would make that person more effective. So, but that's fine. I do have one quick question. I know it's late about the revolving fund for the recreation, the recreation revolving fund. And you're showing a total loss, and I know this is going to change, a large loss for the year. Who picks up that, that loss? So you were showing a, a loss of 218,000? And who, who makes up that? Does that, I like them?
That was originally intended to pay down the, spend down the fund balance slightly. In origin, we keep getting asked by the auditors to, their perception is to bring down the fund balance on a revolving account.
Okay.
And even sometimes, even though when we budget a, a loss in a lot of our, we end up better than that. So for the most part, we're budgeting to break even in our operation. The loss is coming from the capital investment that would be going on there.
Did you think about, I know that your salary isn't included in the general fund and not included in the revolving fund, is that correct?
Correct.
Is there, did you consider maybe moving your salary into this fund and that would draw it down as well?
Oh, I can take that one. So that has a bit of a story. So the year that Dan and Di Stefano retired, Chris Whelan made the decision to take the recreation director's salary out of the general fund and put it into the revolving. And then to put a sum of somewhere between $25,000 to $30,000 into recreation from the general fund in order for the department to run special events. And I have to say, while I understood that, you know, I worked very hard for the, you know, the following 18 months to bring a different perspective, which is that if we as a community, if Concord feels that having a recreation department is important, then the idea of having a recreation director have to raise his or her own salary doesn't really keep with the spirit of public recreation. Because at the end of the day, if we ever face, and this was always something that I talked about, like imagine if, and now we're technically in a situation like that. If we're ever in a situation where we're not making enough revenue to be able to sustain quite a bit of the operation, would that mean that the town doesn't want to have a recreation department? And I didn't get the feeling like that was it. And so I think that it's important to have the town have some skin in the game. And, and I was thankful that that was agreed to.
Well, we're not there yet where we're at the point where the revolving fund can't fund the director's salary. In fact, we're actively trying to draw down the result, the balance. So we're far away from the scenario you painted. To me, it seems logical that if we've got a revolving fund that holds both the revenues and the expenses for a certain benefit to the town, that it would contain all of the costs. But that's my, that's my opinion, especially.
Enterprise model and, and I understand that. But, you know, just to, to that point, I think in the, in the upcoming months, you're going to see a different picture. We are, we are, we've spent a lot of that fund balance. It would be a challenge to do that.
I just know at the beginning of the enterprise book, it was included there and the rationale for including the recreation fund revolving is that it was expected to cover its costs. But we can, we can, we can agree to disagree on this.
Okay.
I have, I have a question about the BD and the emphasis on, you know, possibly getting a marketing person and that being a priority to the level of, you know, it's an open position that we're going to probably want to go forward with. One of the ways of possibly getting some amount of name recognition and marketing that would extend certainly well beyond the Town of Concord would be to affiliate the, the facility with some other organization. I'm thinking the YMCA or some other organization who, you know, we could, we could use as a platform for, you know, fundamentally in the facility, hey, here's a, here's a, here's a local Y. Or it could be any, anything. I don't know. I'm just, I'm throwing it out there as a, as an idea. Is that, has that ever been contemplated?
Everything is for sale, Dean.
Make me an offer, you know?
And Kate can give you the real answer on that, or Ryan?
I, I could tell you that we've investigated somewhat at, with NERSA, which is a national, you know, health and racket club organization that you could be a member of and kind of be affiliated with so that, you know, people traveling across the country come here and they look for their local nurse or club. They do not allow municipal facilities in. It is for private sector only. So I had met with them at the Athletic Business Show recently and they, they right away were like, oh, you're from a municipality, you're, you're unable to. So that's a little bit of the challenge is just being in the municipality. Most of the things that we're going to, a lot of the private sector are involved in. But, you know, there's some bigger picture components to what you're saying as well. But on the level that I'm looking at and talking to those groups, they're more often not interested in playing with the municipal groups.
And as far as the idea of the YMCA, we, we've often had that as a sort of a back ended joke to one another that if we can't make this work. But having worked for the YMCA right out of college, I can tell you that they don't take, they don't come over and, and have a facility as a share. The organization could and may take it over. They usually buy it for lower than cost and they usually take it off of whomever's hands because it's failing. And I don't think that we're there. And I also think that what you'll find is that the YMCA model of doing things is, is a bit different than the way BD runs now. And so I'm not sure, I think we'd have to be very clear with the community about what would change for the membership. And it doesn't necessarily mean that they're bad changes, but they're different. Their model is different.
Just, I would just.
Understood, understood.
Throwing it out there as a thought, you know?
And with that, with that fund balance, BD is really not in as bad a shape. You know, it's just that flat revenue line is, is something we really want to look at and saying, how do we get out there? And, you know, what the place was built for originally was to be out there and be part of the community and have, you know, not 200 family memberships, but have 400 family memberships. That's what we're trying to get back to and get that.
Okay. Are there any questions from the public? I don't see any. And so given that that's the case, I think, I think thank you very much, Ryan, for your presentation and Kate and Stephen for, for chipping in on it. And I think that brings our meeting to, this public hearing to a conclusion. So I'd like to hear a motion to adjourn the hearing and.
No move.
Good night.
No move.
He has a motion, a second, got a second there. All right, there's Mary. I think if we all just say, I'm done.
This is our next meeting.
There, there is no scheduled finance committee meeting. And I am going to work with the, the select board and the town manager to set up several. If we're going to get a June 22, you know, town meeting, we are going to need several between now and May 22. Because that's what we.
Dean, one question for you.
All of our recommendations done. What's that?
Dean, question for you. You, there was mention, you had mentioned, I think, I think Mike Lawson had mentioned the four o'clock meeting tomorrow. Are you going to be attending that and?
I am.
Okay.
So I, I had sent an email to the group saying, if you have any questions you would like voiced at that meeting, send them to me. And I'll be happy to relay them during the meeting as individual member voices from the finance committee. We haven't had any chance to meet and formulate finance committee questions, but individual voices would be represented. So send them to me if you have any. Okay? Night all.
Good night, thank you.
Night.